Reverend Daniel Helms, you should know that name, Brian Helms' brother. So the Branch Community Church, if you'll come up, and the Pledge of Allegiance will be done by Commissioner Leota Wilkinson, I'll rise if you're able to do so.
Jesus, I'm so grateful for the gospel. I'm grateful that you loved me and died for me and rose from the dead and provided for me what I could never do for myself, which is eternal life. And I pray now for this meeting. I'm so glad that I live in this county. I'm so glad I live in this city. And a lot of the decisions that are made in this room has created this community, this place, that is just a wonderful place to grow a family. And so I pray for the leaders that are here. I pray for everybody in the room. I pray, God, that you might use them to accomplish your purposes in ways that would be pleasing and honoring to you. And I particularly want to pray for the Christians. I pray that the way that they love and speak and behave in this room would be a reflection of who you are, Lord. And so I just pray your special blessing on this meeting. And it's in your name I pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge...
I also want to give a shout out to you real quick before you walk out.
Yes.
Daniel, this gentleman right here just had, gave "Pardon your kidney," was that correct? A week ago to someone in need and is here today. So thank you very much and God bless you for that.
Thank you.
We are going to recess the meeting right now. Florida Statute gives us just a very short window to have an executive session. Our board will be leaving to go talk to our attorney and staff about something legal, but Florida Statute is very precise about what we talk about. So we're going to recess this meeting and we'll be back in just a few minutes.
All right, thank you for your patience and we apologize for that. Very, like I said in the beginning, Florida statute gives us a very narrow window to have an executive session where we talk about only a few things. And those conversations will become transparent later on down the line. The next item of the agenda is our approval of the minutes.
Move approval of Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting minutes dated July 23, '24 as amended, and also the emergency meeting dated August 2, 2024.
I'll second those, but I have a change in amendment on the emergency meeting on page 17. I brought it to Ms. Wilkinson's attention that it says public comment was opened by Commissioner Turner. I believe that should be Chairman Harvey.
Okay, so we have an amended there. Is that part of your motion, Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a proper motion, we have a proper second, any further discussion on the approval of the minutes? Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the ayes have it. We are going to recess our board meeting, go into our solid waste collection meeting. Do we have the other mayors here from the municipalities? All right, so it's just going to be us today? So we are calling to order our solid waste collection and disposal district. First item of business is our approval of the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, move approval of the solid waste disposal district minutes.
Second. Make proper motion, proper second, any further discussion on the motion at hand? Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the ayes have it. Next is our review and approval of special assessment role required for implementation of a solid waste rate resolution. Ms. Julianne, do you have that? Or do you want it?
If I can get my microphone to work, sure. You have, this is ratifying the solid waste rates that you've already set at your last meeting, and reviewing and approving the special assessment role, which is required for implementation of that.
Okay.
Move approval.
Make a proper motion to move this approved.
Second.
Proper second, any further discussion? Hearing not all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, like sign, the ayes have it. Before we go to our presentations, I do want to congratulate elections for last week, and to all the winners of the election, and then everybody who put themselves out. Today, we do have two in the room. Josh Alexander is in the back, he will be coming one of our new commissioners, and returning to us would be Commissioner Walton Palistir. So congratulations to the both of you, and yeah. We're looking forward to the South Putnam getting here quickly too, so, but congratulations. Presentations, Ms. Lori Parker, if you'll come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We received nominations from managers and employees for their nominations for employee of the month, and we would like to recognize Renee Brown as employee of the month for August. Renee has been with us for almost two years. She is a customer service representative at Public Works, and JT is going to present more for us.
So Renee is turning into a jack-of-all-trades for us. She does a fantastic job answering the phones every day, all day, putting in work orders for citizens that call in. She can de-escalate a situation quickly on the phone. Those that she can't, we'll tag team together and it'll be fine. But she does a great job for us talking to the citizens of our county, is always busy working and is eager to take on more. Now she's being trained to help with our utilities department, and is eagerly ready to move forward there as well. So we greatly appreciate everything Renee does for us at Public Works.
Congratulations, sir. I just want to say thank you.
Congratulations.
I'm going to call for my.
Thank you.
Come on, Public Works people.
I want to.
Like that hat there, Mr. La. Say Julianne can't, or that ain't right, let Julianne be in.
All right. Three, two, one.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Brown, congratulations. Next on our agenda is our Robert Jordan, the regional planner with the Northeast Florida Regional Council. And welcome to Putnam County.
Thank you there, Commissioner. Morning, members of the commission. Name is Robert Jordan from the Northeast Florida Regional Council. Came here two weeks ago to introduce a little bit about the evaluation and appraisal review process. We at the Regional Council have been contracted with the county to do the EER compliance update to the comprehensive plan. And just, I'm going to expand a little bit more on some of the proposed updates that are not just with the text amendments, but the map series, and the water supply plan, and a little bit into the legislative changes since 2021 that make up part of the basis of this EER compliance. So, just a little bit about the evaluation and appraisal review process again. Every seven years, communities and jurisdictions within Florida have to evaluate their comprehensive plan to determine if there needs to be updates based upon statutory changes. And this is reflected in Florida Administrative Code and Florida statutes. The consequences if these do, if this does not occur is that communities, jurisdictions cannot initiate text or policy amendments to their comprehensive plan until they get it updated within a year after notification. So we were trying to get this all to Florida Commerce, the state land planning agency, transmitted by October, because that's the date that is associated with transmittal. But once you transmit that, then you're good. There, you have about a 60-day time period of review agencies, the reviewing agencies to look over your amendments, and then there will be an adoption. On this slide here, some of the proposed EER amendments, these are the specific text amendments that we have proposed, excuse me, within the comprehensive plan. Most are within the future land use element, and that's pretty common. But there is also a text amendment we proposed to the infrastructure element and the capital improvements element. In the first proposal is addressing a policy that permits the Board of County Commissioners to approve the development of housing that is affordable by the state's definition of affordable within commercial or industrial zoning. And I'm going to get a little bit, I'm going to get back to this one because this is, this actually predates the Live Local Act, that is more preemptive. And there's a difference between what you guys can approve of as affordable housing versus what comes, which is, which you have to do with the Live Local. That's not in the comprehensive plan because that's not within your power. This is just specifically what you guys can approve of. And I'll come back to that in the legislative update section. The other, the next amendment, tax amendment, is allowing for resiliency facilities to be permitted use within your commercial or industrial land use. Resiliency facilities, as defined by state statutes, are facilities dealing with natural gas distribution. And so those are, those should be permitted in your commercial or industrial land use category. So those proposed tax policies are within those districts. The next amendment is addressing solar facilities. So solar facilities are by right within agricultural land use districts. You already allow them within your agricultural land use districts, but there was just, it allowed by permitting solar facilities, but I, we put in the state statute where the definition of solar facilities are, just to cover it, you guys. Outside of the future land use element, there is text amendment in the infrastructure element. And both of these, the infrastructure and capital improvements, address House Bill 1373 passed last year. And it's dealing with nutrients reduction within the basin management action plans, or BMAPs, I'm just going to call them that. These are state areas of concern within river and water basins. In the infrastructure element, the proposed objective and associated policies address the feasibility of converting to sanitary sewer. That is one of the requirements. Putnam County, being a rural area of opportunity, does not have to do that. But we've put in placeholder policies that, in case that, whenever, if that does change or whenever it does change, those can be utilized. There have been a certain number of communities, like St. John's County and Clay County in the north, have already, at least based on what we've analyzed in the region, have started putting in policies addressing these, they're outside of rural area of opportunities. So there will be examples if this has to be done. But at this particular point, it's just placeholder text, the county does not have to do that. Now, what they do have to do is with the capital improvements element, with those proposed, a new proposed goal and associated objectives and policies addressing projects that reduce nutrient loads within the basin management action plans. There are two within Putnam County. The eastern portion is the Lower St. Johns, and the, I might mispronounce the name of it. In the western portion, the Akla Waha, I believe is, that's in the western portion of the county. So there's two, and we've, we determined based upon FDP, or sorry, the Florida Department of Environmental Protections projects, they have some projects that they've listed that are current, along with county staff. And we've adopted, we are proposing to adopt those into the comprehensive plan as statute requires. So those are the main text amendments associated with compliance with the statute's changes.
A solid waste rate resolution. Mr. Julianne, do you have that? Or do you want it?
If I can get my microphone to work, sure. You have, this is ratifying the solid waste rates that you've already set at your last meeting, and reviewing and approving the special assessment role, which is required for implementation of that.
Move approval.
A proper motion to move this approved?
Second.
Proper second. Any further discussion? Hearing that all in favor, sign the vibe by saying aye. Aye. Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Before we go to our presentations, I do want to congratulate elections for last week, and to all the winners of the election, and then everybody who put themselves out. Today, we do have two in the room. Josh Alexander is in the back. He will be coming one of our new commissioners. And returning to us would be Commissioner Walton Palacier. So congratulations to the both of you. And, yep. We're looking forward to the South Putnam getting here quickly, too. So, but congratulations. Presentations, Ms. Lori Parker, if you'll come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, we received nominations from managers and employees for their nominations for Employee of the Month, and we would like to recognize Renee Brown as Employee of the Month for August. Renee has been with us for almost two years. She is a customer service representative at Public Works, and JT's gonna present more for us.
So Renee is turning into a jack-of-all-trades for us. She does a fantastic job answering the phones every day, all day, putting in work orders for citizens that call in. She can de-escalate a situation quickly on the phone. Those that she can't, we'll tag team together, and it'll be fine. But she does a great job for us, talking to the citizens of our county, is always busy working, and is eager to take on more. Now she's being trained to help with our utilities department, and is eagerly ready to move forward there as well. So we greatly appreciate everything Renee does for us at Public Works.
Congratulations, Renee. Just wanna say thank you.
Congratulations. Come on, Public Works people. Like that hat there, Mr. La. Say Julianne can't, or that ain't right. Let Julianne be in.
All right. Three, two, one.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Congratulations. Next on our agenda is our Robert Jordan, the Regional Planner with the Northeast Florida Regional Council. And welcome to Putnam County.
Thank you there, Commissioner. Morning, members of the Commission. Name is Robert Jordan, from the Northeast Florida Regional Council. Came here two weeks ago to introduce a little bit about the evaluation and appraisal review process. We at the Regional Council have been contracted with the county to do the EER compliance update to the comprehensive plan. And just, I'm gonna expand a little bit more on some of the proposed updates that are not just with the text amendments, but the map series, and the water supply plan, and a little bit into the legislative changes since 2021 that make up part of the basis of this EER compliance. So, just a little bit about the evaluation and appraisal review process again. Every seven years, communities and jurisdictions within Florida have to evaluate their comprehensive plan to determine if there needs to be updates based upon statutory changes. And this is reflected in Florida Administrative Code and Florida statutes. The consequences if these do, if this does not occur, is that communities, jurisdictions cannot initiate text or policy amendments to their comprehensive plan until they get it updated within a year after notification. So we were trying to get this all to Florida Commerce, the State Land Planning Agency, transmitted by October, because that's the date that is associated with transmittal. But once you transmit that, then you're good. You have about a 60-day time period of review agencies, the reviewing agencies, to look over your amendments, and then there will be an adoption. On this slide here, some of the proposed EER amendments, these are the specific text amendments that we have proposed, excuse me, within the comprehensive plan. Most are within the future land use element, and that's pretty common, but there is also a text amendment we proposed to the infrastructure element and the capital improvements element. In the first proposal is addressing a policy that permits the Board of County Commissioners to approve the development of housing that is affordable by the state's definition of affordable within commercial or industrial zoning. And I'm gonna get a little bit, I'm gonna get back to this one, because this is, this actually predates the Live Local Act, that is more preemptive. And there's a difference between what you guys can approve of as affordable housing versus what comes, which is, which you have to do with the Live Local. That's not in the comprehensive plan, because that's not within your power. This is just specifically what you guys can approve of. And I'll come back to that in the legislative update section. The other amendment, the next amendment, text amendment, is allowing for resiliency facilities to be permitted use within your commercial or industrial land use. Resiliency facilities, as defined by state statutes, are facilities dealing with natural gas distribution. And so those are, those should be permitted in your commercial or industrial land use category. So those proposed text policies are within those districts. The next amendment is addressing solar facilities. So solar facilities are by right within agricultural land use districts. You already allow them within your agricultural land use districts, but there was just, it allowed by permitting solar facilities, but I, we put in the state statute where the definition of solar facilities are, just to cover it, you guys. Outside of the future land use element, there is text amendment in the infrastructure element. And both of these, the infrastructure and capital improvements, address House Bill 1373 passed last year. And it's dealing with nutrients reduction within the basin management action plans, or BMAPs, I'm just gonna call them that. These are state areas of concern within river and water basins. In the infrastructure element, the proposed objective and associated policies address the feasibility of converting to sanitary sewer. That is one of the requirements. Putnam County, being a rural area of opportunity, does not have to do that. But we've put in placeholder policies that, in case that, whenever, if that does change or whenever it does change, those can be utilized. There have been a certain number of communities, like St. John's County and Clay County in the north, have already, at least based on what we've analyzed in the region, have started putting in policies addressing these, they're outside of rural area of opportunities. So there will be examples if this has to be done. But at this particular point, it's just placeholder text. The county does not have to do that. Now, what they do have to do is with the capital improvements element, with those proposed, a new proposed goal and associated objectives and policies, addressing projects that reduce nutrient loads within the basin management action plans. There are two within Putnam County. The eastern portion is the Lower St. Johns, and the, I might mispronounce the name of it, and the western portion, the Akawah, I believe is, that's in the western portion of the county. So there's two, and we've, we determined based upon FDP, or sorry, the Florida Department of Environmental Protections projects, they have some projects that they've listed that are current, along with county staff. And we've adopted, we are proposing to adopt those into the comprehensive plan as statute requires. So those are the main text amendments associated with compliance with the statutes changes. One of the other changes we are proposing is the planning horizon. Currently, the planning horizon for the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan is 2035. There has been statutory changes last cycle that bumps up that, the long time, the long planning timeframe for a planning horizon to 20 years. So we are proposing it to go up to 2045. And this is based upon the best available data, and I want to emphasize that, it's the best available data, from the University of Florida's Bureau of Economic and Business Research, or BIBR, that projects population growth to be 4.1% up to 2045. I want to emphasize, this is the best available data. There's some ground truthing that might change those numbers in the future, but for compliance sake, this is fine with Florida Commerce. We do recommend, however, though, we are starting to see developments in the area. When you guys, if you, if you want to, once you're in compliance, to address this in a comp plan update in the future, you can try to get more, you know, better numbers that are more truthful to what's happening in the county at this point. One of the other changes, it's not necessarily related to your compliance, but it is required for all jurisdictions, is to address changes to the North Florida Regional Water Supply Plan. The St. John's River Water Management District has, and in partnership with the Swanee River Water Management District, have updated in December the regional water supply plan. And all communities that have a water supply plan, Putnam County does, and is required to, has to update that within 18 months. So it's not part of EER compliance, but why not just do it now at this particular point? And really, the updates are to reflect any of the demand, water supply demand projection numbers within the regional water supply plan, and any other changes that we get from local knowledge of, just to correct things that are within the water supply plan that may have been updated maybe in 2017, when it was last done, just to reflect the reality here in Putnam County. And then finally, we have map series updates. This is also not necessarily related to EER compliance, but just to reflect data changes. So there's five maps that we have found, well, one of them is your future land use map, so we're just putting in the most recent future land use that is current. There's no changes to the future land use map. We're just updating it to be what's reflective from the county GIS department. We also, but we do have data updates to the functional classification map from Florida Department of Transportation, as well as the annual average daily trips map, also from FDOT, a new wetlands cover map based upon USGS's updated wetland cover, coverage, and a planned and proposed multi-use trails map. There's additional data from FDP. We have some of the proposed, they've just done recent updates to the multi-use trails. We've also proposed, you guys currently have a designated historic district map, but it's really just the Melrose area, but there are some designated historic structures, so I, we're not getting rid of the district map that's specific, because there are certain overlays that are there, but we're adding a new map, or proposing to add a new map that includes those countywide historic structures. And then finally, a little bit about legislative update. So there's been a series of planning legislative updates since 2021, covering affordable housing, utilities, the planning process itself, they've made, added a little more teeth to the EER process, for example, and environmental protection, which is that BMAP legislation. Most of these, so resiliency facilities kind of covered by the utilities. We are bumping up the 20-year planning timeframe to address some of the planning procedure updates, and the BMAP legislation is related to environmental protection. But in affordable housing, what we proposed is actually addressing some of the older ones from, well, 2022, pre-Live Local Act. And so what we have proposed to go into the comprehensive plan related to affordable housing is the Board of County Commissioners, based upon state statutes, does allow, does allow the local government to approve housing that is affordable by state definition with, if, as long as 10% of units are affordable within industrial or commercial zoning. Live Local Act, the one that's preemptive, that you, you have no choice to, that is 40% within commercial or industrial, and it's specifically mixed use and multifamily, whereas the ones you guys can approve of is 10%, and could be anything that's considered affordable within that commercial or industrial. So those are the main differences there. There have been some additional changes and amendments in the last year with Live Local, mostly addressing some of the gaps in the Live Local Act. For example, some exemptions to the height, the height allowances if near a military installation or near an airport, or near single-family residential, they've added in certain text to that as well. So there has been some changes to Live Local Act, not necessarily reflected in the comprehensive plan, because that's preemptive, but there has been significant changes in the legislation with affordable housing on the Live Local Act, and the, there's some, that correct some of those decisions earlier on. Any questions?
Any questions, members?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Turner?
You said when, on your first page of this presentation, that you were going to put in placeholder policies? And that, and that, again, during the presentation, you said, you said that you were gonna make additions that are possibly more restrictive than is required by current statute? Or did I mishear that, or what? Because of my understanding, that the only thing that we were hiring you to do was to change the things to make our comprehensive plan consistent with the current statute. So in other words, make changes that were made by statute that said we had to not make additional changes that we might or might not need in the future. So you basically said, why would we need to put placeholder policies in if we don't have to?
Well, it really is just, it's an objective, a new objective, saying that the county shall comply with the provisions within the statute, and then the only policy added is the county is exempt from the provision. So that's the only thing. It's just, it's, in case the rural area of opportunity, which is only through 2028, goes, you have an objective to add new policies under. But the only policy that is under that objective is the county is exempt from it at this time.
I got you. Thank you.
Any other questions? I do, I have one. BMAP out of Lake Akawah?
Yes.
Kind of the first I've heard about that. So I'd like to get some more information on that from you. And when you talk about the historical sites in the Melrose area, and then updating it countywide, are they named historical sites, or just old buildings? Because I think we gotta be careful about that.
Yeah, we definitely, so on the first question, with, so there is a portion, it's very small, that comes across into the southwestern portion of the county. There's not many facilities, I'd have to go back and look at the map, and I can get that information of what facilities are there that FDP has listed. But it's a very small area, but it's just because it does cross into Putnam County, there are potentially, let me see, I actually have.
You don't need to do that today, just get it to us.
Yeah, I could get that. I think there's only two within that BMAP that's on the list.
And the historical sites and the old?
So the historic sites is from the master site file list from the Florida Department of State's Bureau of Historic Preservation. And so those are, sorry, no, it's not from that one, it's from, sorry, the National Park Service's Designated Historic List. So these are actually, let me see, another project. So the master site file list does include properties that sometimes are just like an old barn that was there, because it's just what's surveyed, right? We are pulling from the National Park Service's Designated Historic Structures List. So it's not just an old garage that was surveyed by the master site file. So I want to emphasize that, there is that difference between that.
Any other questions?
Would you expand a little on the BMAP discussion you just had? I missed that, so.
The BMAP, there was, I, there's two areas in the county that are concerned. One's East Palaca, at the Edgefield property, correct? It's fine, we know.
Tri-county area.
Yeah. And then you mentioned the southwestern part, Lake Akawah.
Yeah, a portion of that.
So that's the one I was not aware of. So that's the one that we want to get some more.
Will the BMAP points, see, when we took on Edgefield, we were told that we would have enough BMAP points to cover anything that could happen within real, within, realistically happen within the future, if we took that over, if we took Edgefield over. So we did, and that was the reason why. Are you saying that we may need more BMAP points because of this other one, or will the existing BMAP from Edgefield cover that one, too?
No, I think we just need to be aware of that one out there, nothing more than that. I mean, I can't see it being, there's not a lot of population out there, and there's not a lot of industrial out, there's no industrial out there, so.
Really is just listing current projects. Either FDP-listed projects, and we, you know, we've verified those as well, because sometimes the FDP list is not always best, but we can verify those. And then the county staff has also provided us potential nutrient reduction projects. So it's literally just listing the project and what BMAP it's in.
And we have a saying here, "Commissioners against acronyms." So the Basin Management Action Plan, and it dictates how we're trying to clean up water before it gets to the river, or something of that nature, correct? Okay, good. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Robert.
Thank you so much.
Hey, one question for you. I noticed on your time schedule, you have a meeting, you're gonna have a public meeting on September 11th?
Yeah, the Planning Commission, we're gonna come in front of the Planning Commission.
Okay, all right. And then on October 22nd, you're gonna have another public hearing, and it's gotta be, that's the one we have to have it done and transmitted to the state by October 24th.
Yes, sir. That will be the public hearing to transmit, the first reading.
All right, good. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Thank you for coming down to us today. Next on our agenda, Mr. Matt Reynolds, our Clerk of the Court.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Good morning, sir.
And I'll go ahead and call the auditors up. Good morning, Zach. And I'll hand it over to Zach. I think the presentation's right there on the desktop.
All right. Good morning, Zach Shalifor, partner James Moore and Company. There we go. Also joined this morning by part of the audit team, Brendan McKittrick, the Director on the Audit, and Farah Rajai, Senior Manager, both core parts of the audits. Always like to have as much of the team here as we can, as we kind of bring it all to a final close. I would also like to thank the Board for the opportunity. This is our first year working with the county as your external auditors. Thanks as well to your administration team, the Clerk's Office and team, and all of your other constitutional officers. You know, as you all know, there's a lot of work that goes into it. Overall, the process, you know, very smooth, lots, you know, normal kind of transition, growing pains, so to speak, but there's a lot of great teams we worked with, and we greatly look forward to kind of a more routine year going into year two next year. I would also highlight, from a timing perspective, the audit was officially released in late July. I think July 31st was the official report date. From that standpoint, from the timing of when we started last year, the transition, and kind of overall flow, it was, you know, technically one month after the state deadline. You know, a lot of that came down to, as we were, you know, going through, had different questions, different requests, working through items, and really kind of a mutual desire, I think, as we discussed in June with the Clerk's Office, to say, now, let's make sure we get this right rather than rush. So going into next year, we've already talked about some of those, you know, just kind of growing pains again that we worked through, so that we've got a much more aggressive timeline for the upcoming year, and should have it, you know, in the springtime from that perspective. So did want to just quickly acknowledge that fact as well for the record. So from the county perspective, there are five different reports that we issue related to the results of the audit. The first is the audit report on the financial statements themselves. We did issue an unmodified opinion, which states that your financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects. This is the best opinion that we can issue, and what you want to see in this report. As is typical for the county, we did perform both a federal and a state single audit, and this is because the county expends more than $750,000 in grant funds in a given year, both on the federal and state side. That then requires for us to perform really a mini-compliance audit on what we call your major grant programs. So through that work, we had no compliance. Matters that came to our attention, either any findings of non-compliance, or internal control deficiencies related to helping ensure the county does stay in compliance with those grant programs. The third report on internal control and compliance, we do follow what's called government auditing standards, where while this is not an audit of the county's internal controls, there are separate engagements for that. In looking and performing a financial audit, we do have to obtain an understanding of your key areas of internal control that impact the financial statements and financial processes. So if we come across any deficiencies in the design or the functioning of those controls, we would report those here. There were no such items identified. And then the last two reports are separate reports required by the State of Florida Audit General. The first is kind of a catch-all, if there were any financial condition concerns, that's the primary item here. There's a few just other areas that the state says, hey, if you see this, you know, basically, we have to notify the state. Again, the big one is on financial condition, no concerns there, as we'll get to, the county's in a strong position financially. And then the final report is, we do have to look at the county's compliance with state statutes over investment activity, investment policy, as well as the administration and use of E911 funds, and we had no compliance issues there. Did note the county to be in compliance with those statutes. As I referenced, and as is consistent with prior years, we do issue six audits. We have the countywide audit, and then all of the individual constitutional office reports. We always like to do it, just a quick little tabulation, just to kind of show how all the different audits went outside of the county. As you'll see here, really, the two most notable items would be a material weakness or a significant deficiency. None of your constitutional officers had any of those findings. The only item is what we call other recommendations, which is not a deficiency, but just kind of us saying, hey, here's something that we identified in terms of areas to improve, or, you know, look at going forward. The sheriff, it was just, you know, some ideas to improve the overall year-end close process there, again, not a deficiency or any other, you know, item of concern. What I always like to do is to take a high-level look at your general fund, fund balance, you know, effectively, your, most of your unrestricted reserves. And in total here, you can see your fund balance about just under $26 million. The bulk of that is in your assigned and unassigned buckets. The assigned basically means earmarked, but both of those buckets are unrestricted for purposes of talking about, kind of, you know, where you are at at the end of the year, what those reserves look like. The assigned, that number is primarily, in your case, driven by what was identified for potential use in the fiscal year, in the current fiscal year budget, as part of that budget process last summer. And what I like to do is look at that assigned plus the unassigned, again, that unrestricted residual fund balance in your general fund, just relative to what you actually spent, to kind of say, let's take the dollar amount, but put it into perspective relative to the size of the county, you know, how many months do we have in reserves? As you can see on the slide, we're about 35%, just over four months in reserves by that measurement. The GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, recommends a bare minimum, I always emphasize bare minimum as the key there, of two months. So we're about double that, but they do acknowledge, you know, coastal being kind of a major item, and I always say, you know, in Florida, we're all coastal for purposes of, you know, potential hurricane impacts when looking at reserves, you know, whether or not we have a beach on the ocean. So overall, again, at a, you know, pretty healthy level there, consistent with many of the counties that we work with a similar size. In your enterprise funds, the unrestricted net position is kind of that similar bottom-line number that we like to look at. And really, what we look at here is to say, okay, what, where are we at from a trend perspective? Are there any, you know, notable year-over-year kind of consistent declines or things like that? Waste management, a little bit of fluctuations last few years. A lot of that is driven by the long-term liability. If that liability goes up or goes down, that kind of flows through to this bottom-line figure. You know, water, you know, a small increase there, and then the Port Authority, you know, not a whole lot of activity that, you know, continued to come down a little bit from the prior year. And then if you just catch all items, I always do like to touch on for the record as well. First, again, your general fund is your primary operating fund, but there's, you know, lots of special revenue funds and other funds where you have restricted dollars specifically identified. So in those funds, your fund balance is about $30 million, up about $2 million from the prior year. And I always like to acknowledge that a lot of our testing with regard to those funds is geared on the fact of, you know, we're expenditures charged to those funds in accordance with the eligible uses of those dollars, to say, hey, we've got these restricted funds, are they being spent appropriately? We had no exceptions during our testing of any situations where that was not the case. And then every year, you'll get used to me touching on the net pension liability. This standard has been around now for close to 10 years, but the county does report almost a $7 million liability called your net pension liability, so I always like to at least acknowledge... So I always like to at least acknowledge for the record that this is really a theoretical number to comply with accounting standards related to the county's participation in the Florida retirement system. But really, the key here is that every month, the required contributions are made, and that has been done, and that's really the ongoing obligation of the county. But that number does have to be reported in order to comply with the standards, really as an informational number versus a situation where the county would have to, you know, cut a check, of course, for such a large amount.
All right. So would you do me a favor and repeat that statement again? It's just a theoretical number, it's nothing, because a lot of people will be on Facebook or something noticing that number, but it's everywhere I go. Every board I serve on has this unrealistic number that's sitting out there that we carry on a balance sheet that, in case of doomsday, if you will, the state makes the call and says, this is what you got to pay. Right?
Effectively, yes.
Okay.
And where I like to sometimes kind of say, here's where it's more real versus more theoretical, is, you know, let's say the city of Palaca, and we don't work with Palaca, so I don't know what their, if they're an FRS or they have their own plans, but let's say the city of Palaca has their own police and fire and general employees' separate plans, kind of a common situation for cities. Cities that have their own pension plan have to have a valuation done, just like it's done at the state level, and they report that liability. And I always kind of say, if you're in that city level, you have nobody else who's ever going to come pick up that slack.
Right.
At the state level, if in theory it was permitted by statute and so forth, the county were to exit FRS or any other participant exits, as soon as you're out of that plan, you have no liability under these standards. So in theory, that would go straight to zero. So there's no impact, it's one where it's kind of based off of the FRS reality, but then that allocation is just theoretically recorded. What I usually say is the practical side of it is, when we look at that liability, if it goes up from one year to the next, then that probably means there's a greater likelihood that when the new contribution rates roll around the following July, those rates probably will be a little bit higher. But that's really the practical impact.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt, I didn't.
No, I was, I was ready to go to the question slide, so you hit it just right. I'd be more than glad to answer any other questions.
Commissioners, any other questions?
Yes, sir.
No? All right, thank you. Matt, you have anything you want to add? Mr. Reynolds, I'm sorry.
No, sir. I'd just like to thank Zach and the team. Fantastic job and good presentation. I've already got comments that, people that have reviewed the agenda and they gave me some positive feedback, so thank you.
Thanks, y'all.
And I'm going to say this publicly, it's very important that our staff gets, from all of our constitutional and the B.O.C.C. staff, no material findings, no problems whatsoever. You know, that's really remarkable for all the moving parts that go on inside, because county government is not like a business. And as much as we all say we're in business and we can't wait to get there and make it a part of business, and I want to too, it doesn't work that way. And we have some great staff to make this, make this work the way it's supposed to work. So Julianne, I'll call you out because you are our top budget person over on our side of the fence. Thank you for all your hard work and, believe me, if you don't think she knows the numbers, sit down with her, she'll be glad to explain that to you. So thank you for all your hard work and you and your staff.
Chairman, I appreciate it, but I'd be remiss if I didn't extend that to Ms. Ryan.
Right.
So it's certainly a back and forth between Matt's office and Ms. Ryan and myself, and it works very, very well, and we work together to make sure both sides of the house stays where they need to be.
And thank you all very much. Yes, sir, Mr. Turner.
I'd just like to say that I'm glad you started out with the, explaining the growing pains you had this year and switching over and what have you, and that you're going to try to remedy that moving into next year, because this year was quite a problem with having them that late in the year. It messed up our whole budget season. We were, we didn't have the information we needed, so I was glad to hear when you said that you're going to do your best to address that issue moving into the following year.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much for your presentation, we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you all.
And welcome to Putnam County. Okay, next on our agenda is our planning and development public hearing. It's nine o'clock certain, but we're at 10:14. So Zach, do you have the first one, the vested rights determination?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, commissioners, for the record. Zachary Baker, Planning and Development Services. This is a vesting determination case V-24-000004. Property owners are Philip and Julie Bees. They're requesting a vesting determination for two parcels of land in Interlochen. They're obtaining these vested, or seeking to obtain the vested rights so that they can develop the property. It is on the south side of Simpson Road along the northwest portion of Hewitt Lake. So the, the two parcels in consideration today result from the creation of a non-conforming lot split back in 2004. In other words, the properties were split without review from Putnam County. They do comply with the dimensional requirements of the agriculture zoning district, however, they do not comply with the future land use categories residential density requirements. The parcels are adjacent to one another, they're undeveloped, but they were split from adjoining parcels on either side of them. There was a lot inquiry issued on, in 2024, which verified the unbuildable nature of these parcels and advised the property owners of what sort of remedies they may seek, and the vesting determination is what they chose. LDC Section 45-801B provides the criteria in which the county staff can vest a property. Unfortunately, these properties did not meet the vesting criteria in the Land Development Code. 801C kind of goes on to further talk about whether there's an equitable estoppel situation in play, which there is not. Here we can see the two properties in question. Here's a little bit better map showing the properties. So again, parcel one was split from the parent parcel on the west side, parcel two was split from the parent parcel on the east side. So a combination, which is oftentimes a remedy, wouldn't work for these because, well, the parcel west of parcel one is not under the same ownership. So ultimately, the property was created illegally. Before the property owners came into possession of the lands, they were advised that this is one of the options for them, is to seek a vesting determination from the Board of County Commissioners. And ultimately, they were created after the establishment of our comprehensive plan and after the establishment of regulations for splitting of a parcel. Staff, despite all this information, still recommends the Board of County Commissioners to authorize the chairman to sign the resolution vesting the subject parcels as depicted in Exhibit A and described in Exhibit B of the accompanying resolution. Take any questions?
Any questions for Zach, Commissioner? Commissioner Wilkinson, you have the floor.
I know we updated our family lot split and some of our other subdivisions. If those were in place when they had filed this, would that, would that have made a difference or no, because they're not family lot splits? Do you see what I'm asking? I know we've made some changes recently.
I think so. So just to clarify, are you asking if we had those provisions in place in 2004, would they have been able to utilize them?
Yes.
Yes, if, if they met the criteria, they would have been. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions? Zach, I have one. Is there any, I mean, I'm very familiar with that area. Is there any other properties that you know of out there that are in that same position? Or do you, it's just going to, whenever they surface?
That's a good question. We don't know, you know, offhand which properties do not satisfy the requirements of our code. It's typically a case-by-case basis. Whenever we find them, we work with that property owner to come to some sort of resolution.
All right. Since there's no other questions for Zach?
And most, and if I'm not misunderstanding, under the current rules that we have in place, this would just go to, this would have went to the Administrative Deviation Committee for 150 bucks unless they decided not to hear it instead of what's had to happen, because this was initiated before we changed the Land Development Code or updated the Land Development Code, if I'm not mistaken. So if there's any more of these under the same situation, there's a good chance ADC will just hear it before it comes to us.
And that was a good move to make that change right there. All right, are the applicants here? Brian and Mr. Bees and Julie Bees?
The applicants are not here, but their, their Realtor is present.
Would you like to say anything? And I need you to state your name and address for the record, please.
Tedra Phillips, 7110 Middleton Avenue, St. Augustine, Florida, 32080. Hello?
Good morning.
Yes, the Bees's were planning on being here and they had an emergency roof leak last night at their office, so they could not make it. They purchased these parcels and basically to fund the previous owner, and then the owner was going to eventually purchase these back, and years passed and he's passed away since, so they've listed them with me. I was assuming they were both buildable, a six-acre parcel with 190 feet frontage and a four-acre parcel with 132 feet frontage. There's residential all out in that area with less frontage and beautiful land, you know, beautiful live oats, late frontage. And when I got the lot inquiry back, to our surprise, they were not buildable. So we've gone through the process and here we are. So we appreciate your consideration and we can market and sell these properties for them, hopefully, if it's approved.
Thank you. All right. This is a public hearing, so does anybody want to speak in favor or against this application? Anybody going once? That's enough. All right, we'll close that portion. And commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of the request.
Second.
Second. Of Resolution 2024-079. Okay, we have a proper motion to move forward. Proper second, any further discussion?
Chairman Harvey.
Yes, sir, Mr. Pickens.
Clarify what Mr. Turner said. So with what we put in place of the deviation committee, this would have been able to go there rather than the path that they've taken, which is probably a few months of trying to get something done. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, I think that's a good thing.
Can I make a comment?
You may. Commissioner Wilkinson, you have the floor.
I just want to say that these are the kind of things that we've been trying, we've been working on and we put policies in place. It, it drives me crazy when I see that we put big development in and we allow so many parcels on a piece of, on an acre, but then we got six acres like this and they have to go through this whole process. So I know that that's something that we've been working on cleaning up and I appreciate that, but this is the kind of things we should be, be allowing. So thank you.
I agree. If there's no further comment, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Next item is Item C, Rezone REZ-24-00006, BWT Property Management.
Thank you for the record, Jennifer Gazella, Planning and Development Services. This application is to rezone from residential single-family R1 and commercial general C3 to residential single-family R1A. The applicant is BWT Property Management. Agent is Alberta Hips. This is a 2.07 acre portion of an overall 6.96 acre parcel located at 144 South Highway 17 in Palaca. The applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment to allow smaller lots for a single-family home subdivision. The purpose of the requested zoning map amendment is to rezone a 2.07 acre portion of an overall 6.96 acre parcel of land from residential single-family R1 and commercial general C3 to residential single-family R1A to allow for smaller lot sizes for a single-family home subdivision. Of the 6.96 acre parcel, approximately 2.98 acres maintains a commercial future land use classification and a commercial general C3 zoning designation along the portion of the parcel that abuts South Highway 17. The remaining 3.98 acres maintains the urban service land classification and a residential single-family R1 zoning designation towards the north side of the parcel. Should this rezone be approved, the applicant will then submit for a Type 1 subdivision plat process. The Putnam County Development Review Committee, DRC, will review the preliminary subdivision plat for compliance with local, state, and federal regulations. Agencies including but not limited to Florida Department of Health, Putnam County Public Works, Emergency Services, and St. John's River Water Management District will review plans to ensure the development will not adversely affect surrounding properties. Once the DRC is satisfied with the preliminary plat, county staff will arrange public hearings for formal consideration by the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners. In the event that the applicant pursues a subdivision in which no internal roads or other infrastructure is required, staff has the discretion to present the preliminary and final plat concurrently to the Planning Commission and the Board of County Commissioners. An aerial view. Future land use. Flood zone. The conceptual plan. Staff recommends approval of the request to amend the zoning map from residential single-family R1 and commercial general C3 to residential single-family R1A. Staff finds that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the adopted comprehensive plan and meets the locational requirements of the residential single-family R1A zoning district provided in the Land Development Code and the comprehensive plan. At the scheduled public hearing on July 10, 2024, the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the rezoning application. Questions?
Any questions? Commissioners? Doesn't appear to be any right now. This is a public hearing, so we'll go out to the public, or the applicant, is the applicant here? Wish us to speak? Please come up and state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Alberta Hips, and I'm the agent for Mr. Barron, who owns this property under his corporate name.
All right.
I have, I'm here, I appreciate the planning department's review and recommendation of approval. I'm here for any questions you may ask.
Any questions? No, we don't, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so it is a public hearing, so if anybody wanted to speak in favor or against this application, please work your way to the front. And again, going once, going twice, and no one's rushing up, so we'll close the public portion. And commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of Case REZ-24-00006.
Proper motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Proper second, any further discussion on the motion at hand? Hearing now, and all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Next is our future land use map amendment, CPA-24-00002.
Again, for the record, Jennifer Gazella, Planning and Development Services. This application is a small-scale future land use map amendment from agriculture to urban service. The applicant is Puravita Holding Group, LLC. Their agent is Cindy Field. Is two acres, I'm sorry, two parcels totaling 2.69 acres located at 1304 County Road 308 in Crescent City. The applicant is requesting a future land use map amendment to allow for the possible future development of mini storage units. The subject site is zoned agriculture and commercial retail C2 and has a future land use designation of agriculture. The applicant has also requested a rezone on one of the subject parcels at 1300 County Road 308 from agriculture to commercial, and commercial retail C2 to commercial retail C2. That will be heard concurrent with this application. The parcels have approximately 340 feet of road frontage on County Road 308 and approximately 350 feet of road frontage on Union Road. 1304 County Road 308 is developed with a 2,200-square-foot commercial building that used to be a convenience store. The applicant proposes to reestablish that use with the addition of a coffee shop, which is allowed in the commercial retail C2 zoning district. 1300 County Road 308 is vacant and proposed to be possibly developed as a mini storage Should the map amendment and rezone be approved and the applicant pursues the mini storage development, the applicant will then need to petition the zoning board of adjustments to approve a special use permit for the mini storage use. If the CBOA grants the applicant approval of ASUP, the applicant will then submit to DRC the applicant will then submit to DRC to satisfy additional development requirements. The DRC will review plans to ensure the development is compliant with local, state, and federal development regulations. Agencies but not, not limited to Florida Department of Health, Putnam County Public Works, Emergency Services, and St. John's River Water Management District will review plans to ensure the development will not adversely affect surrounding properties. Sure aerial view. Future land use. Zoning. Flood zone. Wetlands. Staff recommends approval of the request to amend the future land use map from agriculture to urban service as the proposed amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan and is compatible with existing development in the area. At the scheduled public hearing on July 10, 2024, the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the rezoning application.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman. Could you go back to that map that's showing the current future land use? Would just be extending the urban service to the north?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, is the applicant here? Thank you. Please come up and state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name is Don Holmes. Address is 222 North Third Street in Palatka. I think Ms. Field is the designated agent, but she is a staff at our Crescent City office and she's more important at work than I am today, so I'm standing in for her. Essentially, Mr. Palencia is certain that he's going to move forward with the coffee shops and the convenience store there. Their, their plan for that is set. As far as the mini warehouses, I'm not sure that he's really totally committed to that as of yet, but he owns the property, he's purchased the property, he's looking to unify the future land use and the zoning into the C2 so it would accommodate those if he should decide to move forward with that in the future. And other than that, I'll answer any questions you have, if you have any.
Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Holmes? No, thank you, sir. It's a public hearing, so is anybody in the audience wanting to speak in favor or against this project? And seeing no one come up, Commissioners, what's your pleasure, Holmes?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of future land use amendment CPA 24-00002.
Second.
Proper motion, proper second, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Next up, Jennifer, is a rezone of Z 24-00007.
This application is to rezone from agriculture and commercial retail C2 to commercial retail C2. Again, the applicant is Puravita Holding Group, LLC. This is a 2.23 acre parcel located at 1300 County Road 308 in Crescent City. The applicant is requesting the zoning map amendment to allow for the possible future development of mini storage units. The subject site has split zoning of agriculture and commercial retail C2 and has a future land use designation of agriculture. The applicant is requesting a future land use amendment that was just heard concurrent with this application. The requested rezone, however, is only needed for 1300 County Road 308. The subject parcel is currently vacant and has approximately 200 feet of road frontage on County Road 308 and approximately 350 feet of road frontage on Union Road. The applicant intends on commercial development of mini storage units. It is worth noting that mini storage is not allowed in allowed use by right in the commercial retail C2 zoning district. Staff and the applicant agreed that the commercial general C3 zoning district, which does allow mini storage units by right, was too intense for surrounding areas.
Jennifer, I don't think we need to go through the whole thing. If we could just get to the staff recommendations, if you don't mind.
I don't mind at all. Staff recommends approval of the request to amend the zoning map from agriculture to, and commercial retail C2 to commercial retail C2. Staff finds that the proposed rezoning is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the adopted comprehensive plan and meets the locational requirements of the commercial retail C2 zoning district provided in the Land Development Code and the Comprehensive Plan. At the scheduled public hearing on July 10, 2024, the Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the rezoning application. Questions?
Any further questions? Okay, seeing none. Again, the applicant? Nope. And is there any public comment on this rezone? Seeing none, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the reclamation of the Planning Commission and approve Rezone REZ 24-00007.
Second.
A proper motion, proper second, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Next on our agenda, public comment on agenda items. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on the consent agenda items coming up? And this screen is flashing. Okay, thank you. Those are agenda. I think these items are under new business, if I'm not mistaken. Yeah, I believe they're under new business, coming up. Mr. Hafner, a little confused on yours. Is yours on new business or is it on the agenda item, the consent A through I? Okay, so it's on the new business, so we'll wait on that then. Thank you. Okay, so there's no other public comment on agenda items? Commissioner Pickens, is there any items you'd like to pull?
Yes, C.
C? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Turner?
I was going to pull C also.
Okay. Commissioner Wilkinson?
I have none.
And I want to pull Item F and I. So the chair will entertain a motion on the remaining items.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of consent agenda items A, B, D, E, G, and H.
Okay, we have a proper motion, we have a second?
Second.
Proper second, any further discussion on those items? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Commissioner Pickens, you have the floor on Item C.
Yeah, on the, as per our discussions at the special meeting to go over the fee schedule, are the changes that we made, are they correct in the last document that we have?
Mr. Julian?
I thought yes, Commissioner Turner's telling me no, so I.
I just wanted to have that, have that discussion.
So when we had that meeting, we had an original and then we had in here a proposed, a conversation where you guys pulled and revised the fee schedules and then what I sent out was the redline version, which is the most up-to-date version of what you guys, what I recorded as you guys' recommended changes, and then a clean copy. The only change that happened past that was mostly some grammatical or narrative on the utility fee schedule, which was also sent out, which is now 430, or the very end of your pages, 338 through 441, that Laura sent out. So if there is something there that was inadvertently missed, please do let me know.
Mr. Pickens, would it be all right if Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Are you teaming with you?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. There was one that we missed and I didn't really catch it until over the weekend, so my apologies for not pointing it out on Friday during our morning meeting. It actually helped when we got the Board of County Commissioners' special workshop. We got the notes from it on what the board had actually done during the meeting and it pointed out what I thought that on page 251 in your packet, page 11 of the fee schedule, we changed the under 10 acres and over 10 acres on the PUDs. We had voted in the board meeting to, for it to be 1,000 and 2,000 on the new. The major modification is correct for what we voted on and then on the minor modification, we actually voted for it to be 350 and 500, not 1,000 and 2,000, according to the board actions that were sent out from Laura.
Okay, so to be correct, under the PUD section of page 251, under new, anything under 10 acres would be 1,000, anything over 10 acres would be 2,000, and then down here at the minor modification, we voted that anything under 10 acres would be 350, anything over 10 acres would be 500.
That's what we voted on at the workshop.
But the record showed that.
Correct.
Okay?
Okay, and then I gave this some additional thought since we talked about it last and on page 437 in your packet on 34 of the fee schedule. Excuse me. We've got under wastewater grinder pump repairs, including but not limited to replacement. After having given that some thought, you know, we waived water meters where, you know, if you're a lot of record before a certain time and you have a water meter up to three quarters of an inch, we'll put you a water meter in, but then it's up to you to go hire a plumber and hook your water up to it. We've already done all that. So the language in this new copy is just cleaning that up. And we did talk about this in the previous workshop. I think we should fix these grinder pumps. I really do. And the reason why, for residential. And the reason why is because I can foresee some family that's barely buying groceries and their county grinder pump goes out front and the $400 grinder pump put them out of buying groceries for the next two months. So we're not talking about developers here. We're talking about grinder pumps in front of single residential homes within the county. DEP makes us fix them. But I don't know that DEP makes us pay for them, but I don't know that it's not a good idea. So one of them goes out and the next four, five months, they have to take the fees from the grinder pump and, and use that to repair the pump and then the county gets to keep on charging them. So I mean, it's not like we're not going to recoup our investment along the way. So I would like to request that, that we just take the during normal business hours and after normal business hours and just strike those two lines out of it and just put, and just leave the other one up there with a zero cost on maintaining the residential grinder pumps. Now, I just think that's the right thing to do.
So to be clear, Commissioner, you're wanting us to fund repairs up to and including replacement for residential sewer customers?
That's correct.
Okay.
So we'll use the money that we get from charging them monthly services, we'll use it towards fixing the grinder pumps.
So it won't work quite like that because the budget for what we assume are going to be fee services are already budgeted for a break-even operations. So what will have to happen is we will have to build into the budget an additional repair and maintenance line and fund it from the county in order to make those repairs.
Well, that's what we're doing at the present time.
It is, and that's why the commission, the comments from the commission was the last time we wanted the citizens to maintain or repair or incur the cost.
And I voted for that. I'll be the first to admit that I voted for that. But having thought about it further, I don't, I just see problems with it. I mean, we're charging the citizens monthly fees to use the grinder pumps for new ones. We're going to make them pay them, pay for them and put them in unless they're within a grant. So, and then we get fees off of them every month, but then we've got to maintain them by DEP, but we're going to be charging fees. So if we don't think the fees are high enough, then go up $3 or something on the monthly service and use that fund to offset the repairs for everywhere else instead of, instead of, if I'm unfortunate enough that my pump goes out this month, that it costs me $400 even though I didn't have anything to do with it whatsoever and it's not my pump. I mean, what about the ones that we have to do by grant? We put them in by grant, we hooked them up by grant, we told the people in the area that we were going to repair them because we put them in by grant and that was part of the reason. And all they had to do was pay a monthly fee, you know, such as over there where the water management ones are, that we had to put in grinders, hook them up and everything. So now it kind of makes me think that we're not going back on the deal here and telling them now, except unless your, unless your pump breaks. If your pump breaks, then you got to pay for whatever repairs or service, plus 15%, plus 40%. So if I'm the only one that this bothers, that's okay and we'll just leave it like it is and move on. But I just think, I just don't think that's within line of what we've been trying to do around here.
Mr. Sout, you want to offer something to the good of the conversation?
You know, while he's walking up here, I'll be the first to admit that I want out of the grinder pump business. I wish we didn't ever have to touch one or mess with it again. But according to JR, DEP's saying we got to do it. We don't have an option here.
For, under DEP, because it's a low-pressure system, we do have to maintain all of the grinder, residential grinder pumps. We did get out of commercial last year. But with the residential, we do maintain them. Just the pump is going to be roughly $2,000. The whole system is approaching 4,000. So if we, we could front the money upfront to keep them going, I agree with what you're saying, but we could add it to their billing and spread that out to where they still, we recoup the dollars, would just be my suggestion for Public Works, to try and keep that system solvent and making money and not getting in the hole. Spread that out over whatever you want, 12 months, 24 months. You know, we can take guidance from you on how to spread that out.
What's the life expectancy of a grinder pump?
They can, they can last for years if you're not putting anything in there that you're not supposed to. But when we remove wipes that aren't supposed to be in there, towels, jeans.
Yeah.
Then it gets messed up. But if you use it appropriately, it's indefinite, especially if you get the right ones. Some of the E1s that we're trying to get away from are not submersible. I'm sorry.
It's like seeing if your car is going to break down or not. Who knows what's going to break down next week? It should last a long time. But like I said, if I'm the only one that this bothers, that's fine. I'll go on with it, but I voted on it before. But thinking about it again, I just think that this is one of those situations that while it's not pleasant by any means whatsoever, I just think that, that you're going to take somebody that doesn't have this 1,500 to 2,000 even spread over a year or two and you're going to make it critical on them to where it's not going to bother the county's overall picture much whatsoever. If we go maintain a few grinder pumps and if somebody's grinder pump goes out during the year instead of being a devastating loss to the family household, which it very well could, it would just be replaced, carried on, and then paid for over a period of time with the money that's, that's paid, that they pay in services.
And I can't give you an exact number, but I know it doesn't happen often. Just for.
So Commissioner, let me just say also, this is kind of new for everybody. The fee schedule doesn't have to go into effect until October 1. So if we want to take some time to back up and think through this, we certainly can. If we want to go down that road, if that's what the board wants to do, we just need to think through the provisions or the caveats that would be placed on it, right? Because if you've got a residence who's putting things down the septic system, that's tearing up grinder pump after grinder pump after grinder pump, a blanket waiver that the county is going to cover the cost. If we repaired three in nine months, we may want some sort of ramification. And/or Sundays, if it's a Sunday, we've got to pay somebody emergency hours to do it. So you're talking about additional cost. So perfectly fine exploring any direction you guys want to take, but I do want to make sure that we think through it thoroughly as to what we put in the fee schedule.
I do understand that every now and then you have a problem residence, but most of the areas that have been giving us the biggest problems with people putting things in grinder pumps and lift stations that didn't belong were commercial. And we got out of the commercial business. There might be one here and there. I understood, I heard a story from somebody where they found a pair of blue jeans and a grinder pump somewhere in a residential area. So we've had, there's one. But did they find again and again and again? I don't know that. I don't know that, or if they just found it once. So, I understand your point completely, I really do, about that if we're having a, a problem somewhere, but I don't know that that doesn't need to be done in ordinance instead of in the, the fee schedule, that we pass a, in a separate rule, a separate something that says if your grinder pump goes out three times in a year and it's determined because it was from misuse or twice in a year, once if it's from misuse, that, that, that you can be charged. If we can put that in there, I have no issues with that at all. I'm not saying cover the people. I just don't want to be charging the unlucky one whose pump goes out this year with, when it's not, not their fault. That's all I'm saying.
Something else that you might want to consider, um, is could we offer an, a warranty program where they pay an additional fee each month? Minor, $5, $10. I'm just throwing something out there that if it went out, then they're paying this warranty fee and then it's covered. If not, it gets spread out. Again, just, he brings up a great point, just want to throw food, food for thought.
Yeah. Commissioner Wilkinson?
I think I would like to, um, think on this for, for, till the next meeting. I think Julian brought up some very good points. You could have people out there that if they know that it's not going to be a problem, that they're just going to do whatever they want to do. And I, to Mr. Commissioner Turner's, uh, comments, I agree. I am certainly for the little guy and I understand that sometimes when you're living paycheck to paycheck, something like that could wipe you out. So, but I do think I need more information to make a good informed vote on this.
Chairman, can they come back with some recommendations? Because I mean, that might not be a bad idea as to, just to look at that, how you would charge to, you know, to give them some type of peace of mind and, and eventually would, they would pay for it.
Yeah, we can break it down. What's the whole station cost? What's just the grinder pump? What's a possible warranty? Like anything that we can think of, put our heads together and, and give it to you.
Would it be possible that you also broke down how many of these actually go out a year?
Yeah.
Right.
And I think like three a year go out.
I know it's not many, but yes, I'll get that number.
We're talking about all this, putting somebody in trouble for three grinder pumps a year.
But we're going to be expanding those services, correct? So, we're going to be adding hundreds of people onto these lines?
But the ones that are inside of like a subdivision or something like that, there's, they probably going, we could probably during the DRC make some kind of rule that they pay for that service. I don't know. I'm thinking we can, that we can treat those different. But whatever, I mean, even with thousands of them, we got hundreds and hundreds of them now, three a year go out, then heaven forbid the poor family that's living paycheck to paycheck, that they're just unlucky enough that their grinder pump went out that month and now they're, they're financially devastated for the next two years when it, it's such a drop in the bucket in the overall system around here, it's just not even worth putting somebody in that position over. So, like I said, if it was, if we were talking 100 grand a year or something, that'd be different. We're talking a few thousand that somebody unlucky is going to hit.
All right. So, we have the prop, we're going to table this part of it, but we do have our other corrected numbers. So, Mr. Pickens?
Let's, let's table the entire fee schedule because it's one ordinance, it's one document. Um, let's bring it back to you guys with some recommendations and some further discussion on what that would look like, um, to, to accommodate. Because, well, and we'll have some further conversations, and I understand it may have been three this year, but if we have 20 next year, guess what? We're going to pay for 20. Um, so, we're going to have to really work through the process as to what you guys are wanting to see from staff.
All right. So, Mr. Pickens, are you okay with tabling this item until further notice?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Turner?
Yeah, I would like to go ahead and make the changes that we voted on back at the, at the last one.
Ms. Julian would like for us to.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can give you this copy of the, if you need them.
Okay. So, we're going to table this to the next meeting and that'll be coming back to us or future meeting. I won't say next, but should be very soon. Um, okay. I have a couple of item I. JT, are you, you want to run down here and, and just kind of briefly explain what that item is? We did meet with DOT the other day in a Zoom call and, um, Scott, thank you, I should have called you too. I'm sorry. Okay.
Are your strengths and weaknesses?
Yeah, there you go. So, Scott Knowles, our county engineer, go ahead and.
Yes, sir. Uh, Scott Knowles, county engineer. Um, and we had the discussion with DOT on what this is. And basically what it is, is, uh, based on the, the latest census, and this was the 2020 census, that they, uh, expanded the boundary of what they consider the urban area. Uh, and also they, they connected the boundary so it made sense and some of the places there were some gaps. Uh, so what this is, is, is just a, for the use of DOT in determining, um, where their funding goes for like urban use on their roadways and things like that. Doesn't really affect the county as much, but if we have some, some grants that would be, uh, coming through DOT, uh, we may be able to get, uh, urban road grants in certain areas that we weren't able to get before. So, that's really what this map is.
This adds another bucket of funding that's available to us.
It's mostly used for funding.
Good. All right. Any other question? Chairman, entertain a motion on item I.
Move approval.
Second.
A proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion? Hearing that all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pass this. Item F, real quickly, I just want to say that I did have a little, some concerns about that project in West Putnam. Uh, this is going to be our fire station out there at Baden Powell. Uh, I've shared with staff, I've shared with our attorney, and my concerns are, are okay. We're going to be following this contractor very diligently and looking at the contract. Is that right, JR? Okay.
What were your concerns?
Just, um, some, I guess, um, performance issues in other areas, uh, but that could be an anomaly for this company. So, um, but we did do our due diligence and we did look at it and all that's taken care of. So, the chairman entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Pickens?
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, the ayes have it. Commissioner Turner, do you have any appointments you'd like to make?
None today, sir.
Commissioner Pickens?
I have none.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
I have none.
And I have none. We're going to take a two-minute break.
Let's bring our board meeting back to order, please, whatever order we had. No, I'm teasing. A little levity, never hurt any situation. We did have one appointment that we need to clear up. On the value adjustment board, the value adjustment attorney, even though the chair and the vice chair are appointed by this board to be on the value adjustment board, we also need to be ratified, I'll be the chair of that board, and Commissioner Wilkinson will be vice chair. So this board needs to ratify-
But you won't be, because the value adjustment board doesn't come up until after you're not chair any longer. That's the problem. They won't meet until January.
The problem is, the attorney has to have us right now.
The two meetings of the VAB will be in October and early November.
Of this year?
Yes, sir.
So the board, we need to do that, and we also need to have Julie Masters appointed. I thought we already did that, but let's get all of it done at one time.
Okay, so I'll start this. So I move that we ratify the chair and the vice, current chair and vice chair to be the chair and vice chair of the value adjustment board.
Correct.
Okay, so moved.
All right. We have a proper motion?
Second.
We have a second? All right. Further discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Now we need Julie Masters at large.
I nominate Julie Masters for the value adjustment board.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. We're going to go to new business, and we're going to pull item C up to the top. So Rich, you have the legal litigation settlement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir.
As I believe everyone's aware, there was an application that came through, both through our planning and zoning, and also went through the commission's approval process. In that process, the commission had decided to vote to deny the application. After that, there was a, there are actually two lawsuits that were filed claiming that we had violated our process, at which time we conducted a shade meeting. And with that shade meeting, we, I say myself, along with the county commission and staff, took a look at what was being requested from the different citizens that came and spoke at the meeting, what the expectations were from our planning and zoning department, in addition to kind of what was compatible with the area. Taking that information, I've negotiated with BNR Palaca a proposed settlement agreement for your consideration. With that consideration, the commission has correctly decided that they want to solicit additional public input before making a final decision. Also, if there's any sort of questions, the applicant has an agent, their counsel is here to answer any questions.
All right, so let's do this. Commissioners, what's, any comments you have?
I think I would like, and it doesn't have to be right now, but for you to go over what the agreement was specifically of what we received that we didn't have on the first time, I'm sorry, on the table the first time that we've now negotiated. In other words, what is it, the differences?
So when you look, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to find it in our-
I know it's in here, but I want us to discuss it.
Yes, ma'am. In our agenda packet, you can see the information starts on page 366 of the copy. When you look at the actual settlement agreement, neither side is accepting any sort of wrongdoing. When you get down to the page 372 of the PDF copy-
Right.
The main portions of what the county had asked for that is being agreed to as part of their application for rezoning to a planned unit development was widening the roads. Originally, the application had asked for 20-foot. It is now, it's been agreed to to widen those to 22-foot. In addition, there was discussion about having a secondary access point, which can be used for emergencies, and that has been added to the plans that are on. It is page 387. You can see the secondary access point. In addition to that, BNR Palaca was originally looking at trying to put a sidewalk on the exterior of the proposed development area. However, the actual topography of the land makes that somewhat difficult, if not impossible. So the compromise solution was that they will donate property to the county, so that if the roads are ever widened, a sidewalk can be added at that time, or some sort of alternate solution can be.
On the exterior?
Yes, ma'am. And then, in addition to that, if you look on page 389, there's a crosswalk that will be put into place to ensure the safety along that cross-section of roadway. And those are the major issues that were brought up by citizens during the public comment period previously.
And a turn lane as well, right?
So that's, I mean, that's what the land will be for.
Okay.
The donation of the land.
Okay.
So they don't-
Go ahead, Mr. Turner.
They don't have to put in a turn lane? They're just going to donate land for a turn lane? I thought I saw where they were putting in a turn lane.
Yeah. And if the applicant's counsel can come up, I'm sure he can explain.
Good morning. Appreciate your time today. The turn lane is not-
Give your name.
Pardon me. I'm John Wallace. I'm counsel for BNR Palaca. I'm with the law firm of Smith, Halsey &amp; Bucy in Jacksonville.
You can close that laptop.
I may need to use it in a minute, but I'll slide it down. But the turn lane, nothing is changing about the turn lane. The additional dedication is in addition to the turn lane. So the applicant is going to be required to put that turn lane in. Nothing in regard to the turn lane is changing from the initial application.
Other than the lane, okay.
Other than the dedication of additional land for future expansion. And the analysis on that was that there are no sidewalks in that area currently. I understand that it's a narrow road, and the county may want to expand that road, and that would probably be the more appropriate time to address the sidewalk issue. And that's the reason for the dedication, rather than installing a sidewalk in that area.
Okay.
Mr. Turner, do you have any?
Yeah, I have a couple of just clarifications if I could get. I understand that this may be in there, some of my concerns. Along Putnam County Boulevard, I understand that there is going to be a, let me find, excuse me, on Putnam County Boulevard, it's calling on section 4.8, it's calling for a 10-foot landscape buffer with a privacy fence along Putnam County Boulevard. And so that would be 10-foot, 10-foot buffer plus the 10-foot setback, correct?
That's correct.
20-foot before-
That's correct, Commissioner Turner. The buffer is not included within the platted lots, and so the setback is measured from the platted lot line. So 10-foot buffer, then a 10-foot setback, and then that would be-
There was another area in here that, which is 4.5.3 on page 8 or 379 in the packet, and it basically says that the internal street will be 20-foot wide, and then four-foot area on each side will remain free of obstructions, and then a 15-foot setback from the street. So that'll only be 11-foot setback if you include the four-foot, the other four-foot area. So is that your intent, that it's only going to be a 15-foot setback from the street? Will that give somebody enough room to park?
The parking in the community is all off-street. There's an exhibit in there with the, number one, the development agreement requires parking to be off-street. Part of the negotiation and the terms which came out of speaking with the fire personnel was that the road widths are increased to 22 feet. There's an additional four feet on either side that is to remain unobstructed, and that was out of the concern for getting, you know, emergency vehicles into and out of. There is no parking permitted in the grass or on the edges of the roadway. All parking has to be off-street within the drives and carports.
I guess I'm not being clear with my concern. If the setback is 15 feet from the street, that would be the setback to where the mobile homes or whatever can begin.
Right.
That means that they've got 15 feet from the street to park a car. And so that's in their driveway, because their setback would only be 15 feet from the street. And so that's my concern, is that if the building or whatever starts 15 feet off the street and not 15 feet from the four-foot line, then you only have 15 feet to park a car. I mean, everybody in there's not going to drive a Nova or a Smart car. Somebody might actually have a pickup truck or something, so.
And my understanding is that the, these lots are sized to where the parking can be on the side, as opposed, yeah. The parking, in other words, there, this isn't going to be a house where you park directly in front of the house. You could have basically the mobile home, manufactured house, carport on the right or left side, and then you would pull onto the lot. And so there will be plenty of space for parking. And again, no matter what, they are not going to be allowed to park within the streets or within that four-foot strip, so.
Okay, so there will be no parking within that four-foot strip?
Right. There's no obstructions that are allowed in that four-foot strip. And that's enforceable by onsite staff within the rules that are attached as the last exhibit to the settlement agreement.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Pickens, do you have any comments?
No.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
I'm done.
I have a few. I have a concern, and you might not want to address it, and that's fine, but I really do think that all the property on phases one, two, and three, I think all of it needs to be constructed prior to, and the reason for it is, right now it's farmland. And my concern is that it's going to be wet, and if these, if all the improvements are put in first, I know I can't make you do that, but I just think that would be, that would be the best scenario, to put all your groundwater, all your stormwater ponds, get everything ready for development, instead of doing it in phases. But that's one of the questions I have.
The road isn't that-
My understanding is that phase one is for infrastructure development, which includes stormwater ponds, horizontal, and then phase two begins, which is the actual site development, vertical type site development, begins when phase one is completed. And that is in the, I'll tell you, the sections of the, that's in section 3.4. Point four is the phasing. And essentially, I believe this was addressed, one of Commissioner Wilkinson's concern, is that the phasing plan did not adequately provide for enough capacity over the life to build all 160 lots. And so we've adjusted the phasing plan where phase one, which is the infrastructure, utilities, stormwater, et cetera, is developed within the first phase. Phase two only commences upon completion of phase one. And then from, basically, phase two and phase three, it would permit a maximum addition of 25 mobile homes per year, up to a maximum of 160 units, and that would be measured over 10 years from approval, so.
The other thing, concern I have is page 379, 4.4.1, and second sentence, the development will be served by public water and sewer. Currently, there is not sewer there, and currently, we just approved a subdivision on 207. That's going to be taking up a lot of our availability at our sewer plant. So I don't, I just want to make you aware, I'm sure you are, but it says will be served by public water and sewer, but if available, because it might not be available when that time comes.
Yes, sir. The applicant is aware of that, and at the time that they submit permitting, they'll be submitting requests for reservations, and if there's no capacity available, they'll have to wait until capacity comes available to permit development.
And on 4.8, where it says buffer screeners and landscaping, we had this situation happen in East Palaca, but when we talk about putting landscape buffer with privacy fence along the western boundary, we talked about it in our, in our, some of our land development code changes of being at the start of the approved surface, not at the current surface. So, for example, we, there's a building in East Palaca that put a fence up at the original surface and not the approved sur-, well, you can look right down. I mean, the fence did nothing to hide anything, so.
If I understand correctly, in other words, you're saying that it was from the original surface and not the elevated surface once fill activities-
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I appreciate the clarification. If we need to, we can, we can probably clarify that through, through just the record today.
And I don't know if this is going to happen during DRC, but I believe a comment's going to have to take place. That is, that intersection there at Putnam County Boulevard in East End Road, no, East River Road, sorry, has been changed so many times, where no-stop sign, three, four-way stop sign, three-way stop sign. You're going to put a crosswalk there, but I believe in the future with the development that is going to happen in that area, that a light of some sort is going to have to be placed there. And I would appreciate it if that conversation takes place, that it's not on the backs of our citizens of Putnam County, but it's on y'all to take care of that. So, and that's all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey.
Okay. So we are going to, is there any other comments you'd like to make before I go to public comment?
I'll reserve and address along with anything.
Wrap it up at the end?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. So we are going to go to our public comments. We are going to ask you to limit your conversation to three minutes, and we're going to get started with Ms. Debbie Griffin. Are you ready?
I've reserved my time and she's got to-
We can't, okay, well, okay. Mr. Howard Griffin, I've never seen her let you go first, but that's a good, sorry, Debbie.
This is the first time for everybody.
There certainly is, yes.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Board. Appreciate the opportunity to come speak to you today. I'm Howard Griffin, 125 Oak Haven Lane in East Palaca. And as you know, we were here as a total community back in November, where we pleaded our case, and I thought we did a really good job at that. We gave you our reasons for objecting to this development, and I thought it was sound, our reasoning, and apparently you thought it was sound, because it was a unanimous vote in our favor. Unfortunately, after that, we had heard rumors that the developer was not satisfied, obviously, and that he had hired a high-powered attorney to plead his case, and that we'd be hearing more about that. We had a representative to meet with a county official, and they confirmed that in the event that there was an objection to this, that there was no funds available for an extended lawsuit, and that they would fold. We naturally didn't welcome that, but we acknowledge the fact that Putnam County is not a wealthy county, but we, as a community, feel as though that isn't a good fit. But apparently, there's been a lot of understandings that have gone on about this, and that, that it's pretty much ingrained that they will get their way. But I would like to remind you that the residents there will be paying only a mere portion of what the surrounding homeowners will be paying. It's interesting that one of the comments in their program stated that the neighborhood was mainly, you know, mobile homes with a few regular homes and so forth. I'd like to correct that, because there's a lot of riverfront property there, and they pay really high taxes. It's my understanding that each one of these residents are going to be paying $350 to $400 a year in real estate taxes, and I'd like to have that same bill if I could get it. This is, this, we don't feel as though this is good. This is not fair. I think this will be a drain on the community, financially and otherwise. It will, we, the property owners there that'll be picking up the tab will be paying for the services of these individuals. Am I through already?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, anyway, I'd like for you to remember one thing. You're setting the blueprint for going forward. East Palaca is set for tremendous growth. Whatever you agree to in this agreement, you can pretty much know what's going to happen with future developers with even more attorneys that's going to be pleading their cases. So we would like for you to at least refuse to agree to the waivers that they're asking for. Those roads out there are congested. I met someone on the road the other day with a, with a mobile device, and it's a hazard. They need to put sidewalks in. Their only excuse for not doing that is nobody else has done that. But the rules call for sidewalks, and I'd like for you to consider that.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Debbie Griffin.
Well, she's walking up here, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, ma'am.
Rich, basically, we have two options. We either accept the agreement as it's been negotiated, or we don't accept the agreement as it's been negotiated, and from there it goes, and let, a judge would then negotiate instead of us. Is that correct or not?
That's correct.
So I don't know that we get another bite at this apple. It's either we agree today to do this, or we don't. And Mr. Griffin, I'm just telling you, I don't know who told you that, but it don't have a bit to do with that the county don't have the funds to fight this lawsuit. It really doesn't. It has, with me, it has everything to do with can you win. Because I don't mind fighting. I'm just not going to fight when I don't feel like I even have a chance of winning. And the other side of it is worse than this, because we don't even get to negotiate then. The judge does it.
Okay, okay, okay.
About the waivers that we, I mean, there is a question-
Mr. Griffin?
Howard, because I started this, you're welcome, if I may.
Yes, you may.
You're welcome to come up, but we're going to have to put it on record, because I started this conversation. Sorry, Mr. Chairman.
That's fine. If, Ms. Debbie will relinquish the microphone.
And that's the reason I asked for a reserve of my time. I was going to allot some of my time to my husband.
No, I'll allot some of mine to him, if you don't mind.
Go right ahead, really quick.
Mr. Turner, I think, I think the, and I'm no position to speak for all the homeowners, but for ourselves, we agree that the person who buys the land probably has the right to do that. But also, I totally disagree with giving in on the waivers, because as you know, there's another PUD that's right down the street that's waiting to spring, and they're not going to be wanting to put in sidewalks either.
The problem that I'm having with this, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
You may.
The problem I'm having with this is, is we just granted the same setbacks, the same everything, we just granted across 207. So when a judge, I mean, I can't speak for what he do, but if I was a judge and he bring this case to me, I'm going to give him the same thing that we've given other people.
Right.
And so I don't think that they're getting anything in addition. Their density isn't higher. They're, and I don't, please don't put me in a position to defend this thing. I voted against it first time around. I just need everybody to understand that it's not as easy as us just turning it down this time.
The big difference in those two communities, this is supposed to be a 55-plus community. They need sidewalks. You get people out there with wheelchairs and walkers on East Palaca, on East River Road, it's a hazard. And let me tell you, that is-
I don't disagree with you, Mr. Griffin.
I understand. I understand, and I have no-
We don't get another shot at negotiating this. They negotiated this, and today we get the shot of either accepting it or turning it down.
But the problem is, we didn't have any input into their negotiations. They did this in a back room. And that's not to cast any, any, I'm just saying that I sure wish they had at least come to those of us people who have the grievance to at least have our input before they agreed to something. My gosh, I mean-
I understand your feeling, but-
All right.
That's right. We're frustrated.
Good, we're going to move on. Thank you, Mr. Howard.
Thank you.
Ms. Debbie?
My name is Debbie Griffin. I live at 1710 Bellamy Road, Keystone Heights, Florida. I'm here regarding the property that we just purchased at 110 Oak Haven Lane. You know, I don't understand what happened to us, because the planning commission decided against this thing, the board of county commissioners decided unanimously to not approve this PUD, and now all of a sudden, we find ourselves harmed, because we're here again, speaking before you. And many of my neighbors have just said, okay, you know, we can't be there. They did not receive the proper notice. They did not receive the proper designation that this was going to happen today. And so I think it's unfair that we relied on the board of county commissioners before we started building our house. And as my husband has said, these people at this 55 and up community, it only takes one person to qualify, and everybody else can be in their own ages. And I'm saying, who's going to enforce this? Who's going to make these people move? And these other PUDs that come behind here are going to be even more forceful with more attorneys, and they're going to ask for more considerations. So if we can't rely on the board, who do we rely on? I mean, because we thought it was over. We thought we were done with this. And we started building our house based on that consideration. And we have other neighbors who have built their houses built on the same consideration that we did. And I feel like you're not being fair to the residents of eastern, of East Palaca that are along the river, and you're not being fair to us, because we have relied on your decisions, and we have reacted accordingly. Thank you. That's all I can think of.
Thank you, Ms. Debbie. Thank you. Mr. Jerry Hafner? You should be rolling downhill right there.
I'm rolling.
I got a jumper out in the truck.
Two more weeks, I'll be completely out of this.
Do we, we have a, okay. Okay.
Jerry Haffner, 122 Hilti Lane in East Palaca. Well, dad gummit, now what happened? I had one quote here that I wanted to read you all out of your comprehensive plan, but where'd it go? Shoot. Well, let me start by saying, I really think this county needs to review our PUD processes. I think we have found over the past couple of months that what we all thought was going to be a really great thing has ended up causing some real difficulties and problems for others. I think we need to go back and, and reevaluate what we've done, and admit that we made mistakes, and see if we can't fix them before we get too many of these opportunities coming up. There have been, well, this is my opinion and the opinion of many others, in the last couple of months, I think, two approvals by this commission that, number one, I don't think, and many others don't think, really do fit, or that they're really not consistent with the goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan. Of course, both of those, y'all are very familiar with. It's our opinion that those two approvals are going to destroy the entire rural character of East Palaca. And in fact, it truly does. I mean, it just changes the entire environment over there. What I was trying to find here, that I wanted to read you the quote, I think it's under Mr. Harvey, you expressed a concern about not being able to tell somebody what to do. Well, your code tells you, you can tell somebody what to do. It says this commission has the complete authority to provide any limitations or whatever on anybody in one of these PUDs. So I think y'all need to go back and review that code. I think your attorney needs to start advising you a little better on what should and shouldn't happen. One other comment I would make, as y'all know, of course, I serve on the planning commission, and when it was brought to us, it was brought to us with a recommendation for approval because it was consistent with the comprehensive plan and goals and objectives of Putnam County. Well, I could tell you, and still, in my opinion and many others' opinions, it's not consistent. I think our planning staff, planning department, need to start, in, in these presentations that they make to the planning commission, or anybody else as far as that's concerned, need to start considering that although there are parts of these codes that may make this thing, make this unit, uh, good, there are many parts of the code that are conversely totally against these kind of things. And we need to go back and clarify some of those differences that we have in there, and start being a little more serious about how we handle it. I would just, you know, express my concern and ask y'all to be more cautious when we're planning the, reviewing planned unit developments from now on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Haffner. Thank you. Susan Grand George. You might need a jump right there.
You don't let him run over you.
That's right.
Hi, I'm Susan Grand George. I live at 107 St. John's Boulevard in East Palaca, and I listen on Sunday nights to a newscaster called Farid Sakaria, who basically, you know, reports the news, but before he does that, he has a little section called "This is my take," and he gives his take on whatever the situation is. So, "This is my take. I'm, I'm a resident in East Palaca. You're our governing board. You welcomed comment from the community on our desires and our likes and our dislikes about this project. You heard us, you validated our concerns and turned it down. And in exchange, in, in, consequentially, this whatever threat of lawsuit occurred, which is making you all shake in your boots, but I briefly compared the differences, and there aren't very many. You're getting 22 feet instead of 20 feet, you're getting 160 instead of 175 units, which is a difference in units per acre between 3.16 and 2.89. That's both three, in my opinion. You've also got some quicker completion times. Phase one, two, and three are all ending sooner. And this four-foot buffer on either side, which is not a sidewalk, and in one of your ordinances, it says if you're not providing sidewalks, you must dedicate money towards the sidewalk fund for the county, and neither one of those is being done. And, and on the reverse, those are the few things you're getting that's scaring you into accepting it, for fear a judge is going to do what? If he says, "I'm going to give you the previous setbacks," you've already, you've lost what? Not much. If you just refuse it and go before a judge, hoping, hoping a judge is going to see all aspects of it, he's going to go, "Oh, this is an additional community. This is a, a, see, the resident, 55 and over residential community. They need sidewalks. Any place to put a car. They need a way to get in and out of the place." Across the street isn't, and thank you for bringing up whether water, public water is already available. It isn't. I've been waiting for, since 2003, for it to get to my house in East Palaca. It's not there yet, not going to be there if it services this community and these additional ones that are coming up. There's also the concerns about the floodwater, which is an issue already, and they, with more developments coming, that has to be an assurance. And the main issue, the revenue. What's the county thinking? They're going to get a mobile home tag fee instead of property taxes on these rented lots, instead of land-owned lots? So what's going to pay for all this additional water sewer and runoff? Also, is it needed? It, it's a 55 and over community with specific regulations that a child can only stay, I don't know, five minutes, or the person's got to move out. This is not for the grandparent raising their child. Came up and addressed. So is it needed in our community? Is it bringing in the revenue that you want? Are you going to say, okay, we'll take the extra two feet because we're afraid a judge might not make a respectable judgmental decision? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grand George. Okay, we got one more blue card. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Andrea Conover. I live at 105 Rivers Edge Drive in East Palaca, and I pass by this property every day. And you've heard all the arguments we were making before, and you didn't like the development either, but here we are. So whatever happened, either in the process, or our land development codes, or future, whatever it is, that had to negate all the reasons why none of us wanted this, please fix it. Either the current commissioners or the new commissioners, just, you know, whether it was a staff issue or process issue, whatever happened that made this now going to happen, please fix it, so we don't get these trailer parks throughout the rest of the county, because that's not going to get us the revenue that we need for the county to pay for the infrastructure and the services, and, you know, it's just not going to help us in the future. Thank you.
All right, that's the end of our blue cards. Is there anybody, real quickly, come up? Come on up, real quick? You got three? You can come up and speak if you'd like?
I would. Here's the, here's the animal control panel right now.
No, we're not talking animal control right now. That'll be a little bit later. Okay? So is there anybody else? All right, seeing none, I think the applicant wanted to say a few words.
Mr. Chair, can I just address a couple of issues while Mr. Wallace comes up? So just because it was referenced a couple of times about the notice, you know, the courts kind of look at it in a very unique way, where it's a very difficult position to claim that there wasn't notice, when we have people that showed up and actually spoke, and even spoke to other neighbors about being here. But, you know, it's a big picture, one thing that I know the commission's aware of, and I think it probably helps our citizens to be aware of, is you're charged with making decisions based on competent substantial evidence. So when somebody articulates a feeling of being harmed, or a feeling that their property values change, that's not competent substantial evidence, and the courts have been very clear about that. So when there's the comment that we're afraid of a lawsuit, I don't think there's anybody up here that's afraid of a lawsuit. I mean, honestly, as a lawyer, I miss being in court. I know Mr. Wallace does. We were, worked together at the state attorney's office, and, you know, that's not something that scares most lawyers, at least most good lawyers that I know. And it's still an obligation that we have in advising each of our clients, that you have to make decisions based on what the law is. And when you look at the law, that includes what our ordinances are. And from the perspective of what our ordinances are, we set forth the vision and the plan for different areas of the county. And it's not just East Palaca that's poised for growth in the county. There are a lot of different things happening with infrastructure, the port, development of businesses. You see restaurants, retail, coming to the county. And with those things, you're going to see schools being built, you're going to see development coming. And that's a good thing. That's a good thing for our county. But when our county looked at kind of what should happen in this area before us, there was an overlay district created that said, this is exactly where this type of future development should occur. So when a court looks at those things, I mean, these are not secrets. This is all done in transparent, open government. When the court looks at those things, they look at where we designate these plans to occur, and that's part of the calculus as to kind of what the right thing is for the commission. And the final comment I just wanted to make is, there's been a comment about, you know, if this is approved, then you're basically backed into a corner on approving future developments. And I just want to be very clear, that the courts have said, there is no precedent when reviewing land use and zoning applications. Just because you decide something for one application does not back you into a corner, or does not require you to vote the same way in a future application, because you're charged with reviewing every application on its individual merits. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, go right ahead.
Thank you. I'm, I'm going to address the comments I heard in turn. The first was this idea of the waiver. I don't think...
We are going to ask you to kind of go really quick, because we need to move on.
Okay. I don't, I don't think the characterization as a waiver is really accurate. We are, we're granting, we're, we're dedicating right of way to address that, and the fact of the matter is that if we were to build a sidewalk there right now, it would potentially interfere with future plans to expand this road, and it would also be a sideways, kind of, to nowhere really, because there's no connecting sidewalk there at this time. There's an internal pedestrian path that leads to the existing public access across East River Road. So we think, we, we think it's highly unlikely we're going to have residents out walking on, on Putnam County Boulevard there. As to the property tax issue, obviously, this property currently is being taxed as ag property. It's taxed at a low rate. When this is converted to a PUD with 160 lots, it's going to be reassessed on an income basis, and the, the taxes it generates are going to skyrocket. We can expect them to pay more than $100,000 a year, and that's the property owner paying it. It's not the individual residents. As to the notice, in addition to the normal notice Mr. Commando followed, this was actually published according to chapter 163, 3215. This is the lawsuit that was filed as a comprehensive plan consistency challenge. The notice describing the exact purpose of this meeting was published in the newspaper last week, within seven days from the meeting, which is what's required by Florida statutes. As, as, it pertains to density, I just want to remind, as, as Mr. Commando alluded to, this property, the future land use designation is urban service area, that permits a density of up to 24 units per acre. We're at 2.89 units per acre. I, I think we're well within the density, and that is part of the basis for why we filed the lawsuit. Incidentally, we would have loved to have come and tried to negotiate ahead of filing the lawsuit. That is simply, you have 30 days to do it from a decision, and we had to do it to preserve the right, and then, I think it's entirely appropriate, we met with county staff, we talked to Rich about concerns of the commission, and tried to address those. And obviously, we're here today for a vote, an up or down vote, so, I mean, I think it's, I don't appreciate the comment that this was done in the back, in the back room. We're here today making a decision on it. Lastly, there was a comment about the water service. My understanding is that the plan is actually, or, excuse me, the, the staff is moving forward with plans to extend the water main, and to the extent we submit permits and get started on this project, we're going to be required to pay for the extension that reaches our property, and so that's actually going to assist everybody to the east of us, because they won't be having to pay for that. So with that, I'll take any questions. Thank you for your time.
All right. I think we're good. Thank you very much. All right, so we'll go into, Mr. Stoll, we're done with public comments, so I'm sorry. We moved on. So commissioners, you've heard, what's the pleasure of the board?
My, my biggest issue is, like I tried to explain earlier, it doesn't bother me to bow up with lawyers, but I've got to at least bow up with lawyers with somebody with my counsel telling me that I have a chance to win, and that chances are it's going to be worse if I don't, because I'd rather the county be doing some of the negotiating instead of none of the negotiating. It's just all done between the jud, on the ju, by the judge's behalf. So I voted against this last time, and I'm still not really for it. I just don't, I think they've got me backed in a corner here, and it ain't because I'm scared of fighting, because if anybody in this room knows me, I'm not scared of going to court. I'm not scared of hiring lawyers. I'm not scared of doing any of it. But I just feel like that while this may not be completely advantageous, it beats the option. It really do. Like, it was brought out last time and brought out this time, that piece of property could have had a density of 25 units per acre with the, in the urban service area, and they're asking for 2.8 or something in that neighborhood. So while, like I said, it's not completely advantageous, I just think it's the best deal we got going right now. So, Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
No proper motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it, and I'd like to echo his comments, his sentiments. We've been in a similar situation before, really on a vesting determination, and the board had to decide what is the best for that area. As Commissioner Turner said, and I believe our attorney alluded to it, that if, if we do turn this down, I, I don't think we're going to win. If we turn it down, then the judge decides, and then none of these concessions or anything will be considered, or they may, and they may not. So even though I voted for it, voted against it last time, I think this is the best avenue for the county to take.
Any further comments? All right, we'll call for a vote. Ms. Hope, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you very much. Next item, we're going to continue on as quickly as possible. Let's go to item E, public works acceptance of the drain adjustment.
Can I get to A and B?
A and D.
Okay, you want A and B?
A and D.
A and D.
D is in dog.
Okay, let's go with A then, Julianne.
Yes, sir. This is your first draft of your fiscal year 2425 capital plan. This takes into effect, obviously, we always do in compliance with state statute, a five-year capital plan. The only actionable, executable items that you're approving or will be approving today are those listed in fiscal year '25 column. The rest of those are for forecasting, projection, forecasted needs, assuming everything falls. Each year, we revisit that. If we don't come to a point where it's an absolute need, then we don't include it in the upcoming year. You'll see the totals there of those. The general fund will fund about $2 million, which is including the general fund operations, the transportation fund operations, and the East Putnam Regional Water Fund operations. The general fund funds the transportation and the water fund, because both of those funds do not generate enough dollars on their own to fund their own capital. The fire fund will generate, it generates enough funding to have in reserves to cover its capital expenses. The solid waste fund generates in operational revenues enough to fund its capitals. And then the guardrails are traditionally done out of the BPP plan. The BPP numbers have come in from the state, and after we allocate the dollars to dirt to pave and resurfacing, as well as the debt obligations that were required to be paying, the, there is a sum of money of roughly about $750,000 that the board can direct staff what you want to do with those dollars. We can do a project, as long as it's compliant with BPP. Last year, we split this excess between Georgetown and Dunn's Creek in order to try to further fund those projects. We could do that again, or we could do something different. The other item for consideration was that during this year, the Board of County Commissioners also funded $1 million, which was split five ways for the special... also funded $1 million, which was split five ways for the special commissioners' project funds. This would be the time where we start talking about whether or not you foresee wanting to do that again next year. Those funds are funded from general fund reserves.
All right. I'll start the conversation. I like what we're doing right here, with the exception, I think we need to put more money into the guardrail project. We have guardrails sitting out there. One was brand new that got hit a week later. One was still sitting out on 315 North with, with barricades up. I mean, you know, guardrails are there for a safety reason, and for us to just, for years, disregard that, we need to clean this up. So, I would like for us to add another $100,000 to guardrails out of the $750,000 extra that we got in our BPP. And that would give us $650,000.
Page 351.
Uh, page 351, I'm sorry. So, and that's my only recommendation on that. The rest of it, I'm really good with, so.
Okay.
Commissioner Wilkinson, you got the floor?
Yeah.
Lights ain't working anymore.
No, lights aren't working.
I did push mine before you, though. Okay.
She did.
I don't see anything here about the St. John's Harbor Water Plant. So, should we be including what our anticipated expenditures are for that infrastructure at that plant?
So, this does not include anything that's carried forward from last year. That $1 million you've already moved, we are uncertain at this time what the capital need is going to be. So, this is forecasting what we know is a capital need today. We will revise this before it comes back to you guys as incorporated to the budget with the fiscal year 24 carryforwards as we finalize them. The dollars that we put into St. John's Harbor reserves and capital will be included in there, in next year's budget, in reserves at this time. Because remember, we don't have an identified capital project yet. We know there's capital needs, but it, so then next year, what will happen is that once we identify the capital need and the specific dollar amount, we'll come back to you with a budget resolution and move it from reserves into the capital line to take care of it.
Okay. And just so this board will know, I have been getting calls about the Roddy Road culvert, where we shut that down. And at first, we'd gotten a few emails that said people were, a couple people were happy in that area, that it was quiet and they were getting some good sleep. However, since that time, I have received emails and phone calls of people wanting that back open. So, at some point, whether it's this board or the next board, we're going to have to have a discussion regarding the Roddy Road culvert. I know that we, my, I believe that what we discussed was we would wait six months and see if we had gotten any feedback. And I'm telling you now, I'm getting the feedback. And then, second, the $200,000 per county commissioner, is that something that we have to determine at this board cycle?
Ma'am, you can determine it at any time. Just if you know it, I'll move it from general fund and build it in the budget. If you're uncertain, we'll start the year. We did last year. We started the year, and then we moved the funds after the year began.
I just feel like that that should be the new board. That's my thoughts on that.
I don't disagree. Mr. Turner?
Go ahead and give me the money. I've still got two months.
Come on, man.
Go ahead and, go ahead and, go ahead and give me the money. I'll see if I can't get it spent in the next two months.
I was at least going to get it started.
The new money wouldn't hit until October 1, even if we gave you the new money.
Well, then, I'll have it all ready. Then, I got a month, a little over a month to get it all spent.
Okay.
So, I'll be in the season, sorry. I agree that probably needs to be next year's board that figures that out. The additional money, could we, could, could we agree to split that between those two boat ramps, and then they'll be fully funded going into the future like we did last year?
That's a board decision.
That's kind of what, what we were looking, trying to get those two projects funded. We've been working on one of them for many years and one of them for two years now, and that's going to be the hurdle is, is to get it funded. If we take those last dollars like we did last year with this exact pot of money and split it, then those two boat ramps should be funded between the, the money that's set aside right now and the fishing fund, which is what we've always said, that we've been not paying maintenance out of the fishing fund for years now, trying to let that pot build up to where we could do a capital project with the fishing fund money. So, if we had these two, that should, if we split this money between those two Georgetown and Dunn's Creek, that should pretty much fund them along with the other, and you wouldn't have to find capital funding in the future for those two recreational projects that we spent literally years working on. So, that would be my recommendation to do like we did last year, split that money again.
Split the $650,000?
Yeah, split the 650. Well, put your 100 in the rail, in your rails, and then what the, the money left over would be split between the Georgetown project and the Dunn's Creek project, which is exactly what we did last year.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm definitely in agreement, well, really with both of them. The guardrail project, we need more money in it because I know of three in South Putnam that have been damaged for, for years. And need to probably figure out how to try to build those people back, if possibly with a Florida Highway Patrol report that run into them.
Some of them do pay insurance back.
And get their insurance back on them. I will say, and it is in my district, but to, to be able to, to go to the finish line to have both of the boat ramps, and one at Dunn's Creek and one at Georgetown, to the permitting stage where we just need money, that, and get those things built, that's going to be really, really big for access to the river because we have boat ramps, but none of them have parking. And this is going to give you both at each location. So, I'm in agreement with that. I'll vote to go ahead and do the $200,000, but I have no problem waiting on the new commission. I think that is a tool that each commissioner- He did, right.
Each other's projects.
Exactly. And so, that, that really is benefit. So, I'm in agreement with the $100,000 and then split the 650 for the boat ramps.
I agree.
All right. So, consensus is we're going to, you've got it, you'll bring it back to us.
I would need a motion to split that.
Give me a motion. Yep, because you won't see it again.
I move that we move, that we put $100,000 additional dollars in the guardrail fund, and the rest pot of that particular money, we split between Georgetown and Dunn's Creek boat ramp projects.
So, we had $750,000 excess on better place, proposed, $100,000 goes to guardrails with the other $100,000, $650,000 will be split between Georgetown and Dunn's Creek, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Good.
Second.
We have a proper motion. We have a second. Do we have any further discussion? Hearing that all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. The ayes have it. Julianne, Item D.
Yes, sir. This is a capital asset policy update. This, our office worked on this with Ryan. Ms. Nicole, who is not with us, does our fixed assets, and we currently are on a very outdated policy. This moves the threshold for tagging inventory up to 5,000. This is in alignment with the state's guidance. So, we've been very outdated, and it's required us to tag much more inventory than what's required. It does still allow us to tag anything we deem attractive. So, if there's a concern about it going somewhere, we can still tag it. It doesn't mean we can't, but the threshold moves to $5,000.
Okay. Commissioner Pickens, hang on. Commissioner Pickens has a-
No, I'll just turn.
Okay. Commissioner Turner?
Blue approval.
Thank you. We have proper motion. We have proper second. Any further discussion? Thank you very much. I will say, it's been a long time coming, having this conversation and getting this to the finish line also. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. The ayes have it. Okay, Julianne, you got to go.
I just want to say something as she's walking out on the capital asset plan that we just kind of finished with, I'm assuming. We need to keep in mind that the capital asset is just a suggestion by staff on what they feel like certain needs are going to be in the future, that we're not approving any of that money to be spent today. We're just saying that that's our plan, that if the money's available and future commissions can do it. So, we're not spending next year's commission's money.
No.
We're just accepting a plan.
You've accepted, what you've authorized today is execution of the fiscal year 25 plan. That is, is actionable items, right? Funds spent, executable. The future years is just that, a forecast or a projection of what may be capital needs at that time. That could change drastically. It could go up or down.
Every one of them's coming back to the board for approval. You can't spend the money off that capital plan without board approval. So, it's not like you're not going to see it again.
Or anything that hit a threshold of 60-
Gone. It's coming back to you guys for approval.
For anything 65 and above. Remember, 65 and below.
Unless the chairman's not on board, then it's 25 and above.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you. And Nicole, thank you for all your hard work bringing this forward. So, appreciate it very much. We're going to go to Item E real quick, Public Works Acceptance of the Drainage.
That's the one that we're going to accept. Part of the drainage or whatever because we couldn't, until hopefully, we can get the one in the future.
Yeah.
Blue approval.
Thank you. We got a proper motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Proper second. Any further discussion? I do. I just want to say this, guys. I know that area very well. You know, expectation might be that we're going to put water down in that lake. We're not. So, you know, we just need to be careful, mindful of that. But all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. The ayes have it. Thank you. Item Bs, Florida Small Business Development Center funding.
We have cards.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, this is a request that just came in from our small business development folks. And as you know, we've had a multi-year agreement with the SBDC, and I believe the agreement in place has been for $12,000 a year for several years. And this year, I believe the request has been for $22,000 instead of the usual 12. So, we brought it to the board for some direction, some conversation. And I believe Mr. Rick Paul is here to answer any questions on behalf of the SBDC as well.
I think in the last, we tabled it the last time based on the fact that we want to do some more research on where funds were available at. So, Rick, do you want to come up real quick?
When is, when does your budget year start? In other words, when does this money due from the county?
I believe it's in October.
First in the new budget year?
Is the microphone on? I believe it's in October. So, Rick Paul, the Small Business Development Center, 1100 Reed Street. Good morning.
It's October 1, I believe, is when the-
But this is next year's budget. We're asking to add this, too.
I have a quick presentation if you have the time, or would you prefer just to go to questions?
I'm fine. I think we're all fine.
Okay.
So, any questions for Rick?
I mean, I'm fine with him doing a presentation.
Oh, you're fine with doing a presentation? All right. Commissioner, go right ahead with your presentation.
All right. Well, good morning. Thank you. We just had our Florida Small Business Development Center annual conference last week, and Alex Kelly, the Secretary of Florida Commerce, was there and had some very interesting statistics. Florida is now number one in new business formations, number one in entrepreneurship, and number one in job creation in the country. That makes the Small Business Development Center number one in the country for helping clients. In calendar year 2023, our statewide Small Business Development Center had 164% increase in government contracts. That amount is now $575 million we've helped our clients obtain. We had 120% increase in business starts. That's over 1,000 business starts. 108% increase in capital formation. That's $346 million throughout the state, and personally, that mine was over 6 million. Most of that was for here in Putnam County. 131% increase in unique clients served and jobs supported was a 107% increase to 52,000, over 52,000. So much so that Secretary Kelly changed the buzzword, or the slogan, I guess, for Florida Commerce, that it's now called "Small Business is the New Benchmark," is what he said at the meeting. So, the, some of the areas of concentration are clients by consultant. I'm in, in second place on that out of the 18-county region. That region runs from Amelia Island to St. Augustine over to Cedar Key, and then up on the east side of the river to Hamilton County, back over to Nassau County. In that 18-county region, I'm, I'm number two for clients by consultant. Number, number four for capital by consultant. I have one and a half million so far, and I just got another million recently. That is actually a client in St. Augustine, but that client is a manufacturer, and he's been here before and is coming back to look to purchase property in their industrial park for 30 very high-paying jobs. New business starts by consultant, I'm about fourth in the list there. And ours by consultant, I'm number three. So, the recommendation for the Florida State Small Business Development Center is that there's a $50,000 annual buy-in by the county. In this case, it's split between the city CRA commission, which is now at 25,000, and I just figured around the number of 10 grand to increase it from 12 to 22 for the county. Also of note in the letter I sent out, the email recently, additional projects working on is currently about 4.5 million.
Rick, I want to ask you a question real quick.
Yes, sir.
Last year, we funded you at $12,000.
Yes, sir.
And you're requesting 22,000.
Yes, sir.
And I see the city of Placca, or the CRA went from 20 to 25,000.
Yes, sir.
What if the board did not approve all 12,000? What would happen then? Where would that, where would you do?
I'm not exactly sure. This is a request for funding. So, we were at 12. We're, we're trying to go to 22 to get it to that $50,000 level that the Florida State Office wants for the SBDC.
Been any talks with the chamber on their new Elevate Putnam about getting money from that?
No, sir. That's a totally different project. That's for the economic development portion.
I think everything almost we do in Putnam County and this board is economic development. But that's just my opinion, but-
Yes, sir.
All right. Any questions for Rick?
Yeah, what, Rick, and you may have said it last time, am I reading this correctly, that the funding through the University of North Florida is lower than in past years? Why is that?
I'm, I'm not exactly sure on the funding with University of North Florida. That's what I was told, that some of our funding is, is a little bit more questionable this year than it has been in the past. But the main increases are due to inflationary pressures, of course, and also trying to reach that $50,000 benchmark that the state office likes, or is trying to require, I guess, is the best way to say that.
I would just like to say, Mr. Paul, I, I realize the, the impact you're having in our community. I've sent people to you over the years, and I know that small business, small businesses is the backbone of any small community like this. And while it's great to see large, larger developments come in and larger industries, small businesses is where people go when they need their Little League paid for and when they need their Girl Scout cookies bought and everything else. And so, I understand that, you know, with Elevate Putnam, we're going to be, we have a goal to bring in, you know, many more jobs. And with that, you're going to see, I believe you'll see an increase in your workload for small businesses that are going to be looking for loans, looking for assistance, looking for opportunities to grow their business for the existing ones here. So, I think what you're asking for is reasonable, and I would be in favor of this.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
A proper motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
A proper second. Any further discussion on the motion at hand to increase the funding from 12,000 a year to 22,000?
In the next budget year.
Next budget year.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, do we have any cards for the public comment on miscellaneous items? Again, this portion of the agenda is designed actually not to, is to allow the citizens opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It is not reasonable to expect the board will engage in debate or deliberations about matters on which the board has received no prior information as part of the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Commissioner Wilkinson will be keeping time, and public comment cards are conveniently placed at the meeting room at the entrance and should be submitted to the deputy clerk who sits to the right of the podium and my left. Uh, it's not that important that you have a card, but we do appreciate it. Sharon Longy, is that your name?
Longy.
Longly, I'm sorry, I messed up your name. I do apologize. Please come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Sharon Longy, and I live at 292 Jordan Road out there behind Rodman Dam. And um, the animal control is really starting to bother me, the animal pound. Like I volunteer, I donate out there once a week, that's where I'm going when I leave here. We have no social media at all for people to look up and see if their pets are in the animal pound. The website has adoptable pets from 2020 on it, and this is 2024. There's no reception area. There's steps that go up it, old people can't get up it. You go in it, there's pets in the, in cages in the hallway. There's no office for anybody. It's an embarrassment, it really is. And I used to work for Putnam County over 30 years ago, and that's the same animal pound right there, except the entrance used to be closer to where Waste Row is. So when is the new animal pound going, and when are we gonna get media? Like Marion County has Marion County Animal Services on Facebook. They post all their animals, you can click it, look up if you wanna adopt one. We have nothing at all. Any comments?
No, thank you for your time. The Animal Services Building is being built right now. You can go by and see it.
If it's anything by the one where they built the new office building, they've been building that eight months.
It just broke ground not too long ago, so you'll see it out behind the Sheriff's Department.
No, I know, but the the guy, Brian Helms, told me it would be done by Christmas.
He's here in the building now, so.
Okay, well, it's not done by Christmas.
Thank you.
It's Christmas this year.
Is it Christmas this year?
Okay, thank you.
Should be one.
Mr. Steele, please come up.
Yes, my name's Dan Steele. I live at 202 May Lane out in Interlaken, Florida. And I'd like to congratulate all the officials that were elected this term. And I'd like to say that we really don't wanna follow in the same footsteps that we have followed these last few years. We wanna make Putnam County better. I mean, we're all for it. There's people here, I'm sure everybody will agree, we wanna make this county known for the state of Florida. And uh, the other thing I'm here for is that baseball field or softball field out there at Twin Lakes Boulevard out there in Interlaken. I was out there yesterday, I was here with somebody, has mowed it. Uh, what is gonna be done about that? Because that thing is sitting there deteriorating.
Okay, real quick, there is a private group out there that is trying to form uh, to do an MOU with the county. I have directed some of my $200,000 allotment to fix those fields, but until we get a group out there, we're putting new water in right now, because the water well went dry, but until we get a new group, it's gonna be hard to maintain those fields and keep people from going out there and spinning donuts and tearing the whole place up like they wanna do. So, but we're working on that, and I I hope to see some great progress here in the next couple of months and the kids being used. One thing Commissioner Adams and I both agree to, once that field was gonna be used, we were gonna dedicate money to it, and I did that. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Steele.
I appreciate you doing that. But uh, also the other thing is, I know you all represent your districts and everything, and if we have a, you have a meeting in your district, I wish you would all go to them, because there's a lot of citizens out there and see what the people have to say about these areas. Because right now, there's a lot of stuff out there, where I live in my neighborhood, uh, a lot of people are moving in with drugs. People are sitting there with sewer going on the ground. I mean, I can take you to three or four places right now, they got pipes running out of their badge, just going trickling on the ground. I've been to uh, the different agencies here and can't seem to get nothing done about it. But we need to really get something done about this, because it's getting rampant out here in Put, West Putnam with the tents out there in the woods. We've got tents all over the place. No power going to them, just, just tents. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Shawna McCray? I probably messed up your name really bad. Please state your name and address, and thank you for being patient.
Yes, sir. Um, I'm Shamira McCray. I'm a new resident of Putnam County. Um, I moved two weeks ago from Cincinnati, Ohio. I'm on my nurse, LeBottamis. Um, I live at 111 Jim Bryant County, East Palaka. I might have a couple of concerns, uh, justice, reassurance, and dedication. I am writing this letter to Putnam County.
Ms. McCray? Could you step away from the microphone just a little?
I'm sorry.
You have a very loud voice, and it's there.
I'm sorry. Is this better?
No, you're fine. Yes, much better.
Um, justice, reassurance, dedication. I am writing this letter to Putnam County, East Palaka County for justice, respect to be treated fairly and continuing some of the statutes of Florida. I have concerns such as bullying from the other race in our county with new residents. I recently buy, ooh, excuse me, I recently bought an acre of land, which the other race bystanders tried to invade and destroy, which is private property, stalking from other races, also camping on my property at Jim Bryant Road. And also, um, city water refuses to go undergo. Our rural sulfur water should not be infused, it's bacteria and it's black, um, black deteriorated water in my neighbor's toilet. It's like, the sulfur water, it has like a strong exwell coming from like the city. I'm not used to stuff like that. I was told that I have to infere a well. Um, I'm not familiar with that, but they want me to undergo over $8,000 to $10,000 just to have running water. Um, that was a concern for me as well. Um.
Mr. Tony, could I get y'all to take your conversation out? Sorry about that, ma'am.
No, you're fine. And um, I know it's a difference between East Palaka and Palaka. It's not the same region.
That's correct.
So um, they had gave me a list when I had bought the land that stated that I could use those water resources that was across the board, but that wasn't the case at all. So I've been having problems with getting electricity and also running water, clean water. I think that should be resourced to the community of East Palaka, because we are very short for utilities as well. So, um, that was a main concern for me.
Did you say you're on Jim Bryant Road?
Yes, 111 Jim Bryant.
Have water on Jim Bryant Road? No? How far is it from water?
Right in front of 207, in front of.
Thought we had water on Lewis Brewer 2 or somewhere in there that went out to 17.
Okay. There's another water line coming. When is that coming?
Okay.
Be going in front of Jim Bryant.
Cool, 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 cool. Yeah, that was my main concern, just getting electricity, because electricity poses costing like $10,000. I run a paycheck to paycheck, and I can only afford so much. And then the utilities, like he was saying, I'm new to this, I'm 27, so this is my first property that I ever had bought. So I was just like, okay, I was so excited, but when I get here, I don't have any resources. I had called multiple counties, I had called the health department, no help whatsoever. So that helps so much, and thank you so much, because we need it over there. A lot of people, we do not have water over there, clean water.
This is our public works director back there in the back. Go introduce yourself to him, and I think.
Thank you so much for your time.
And thank you, and welcome to Putnam County.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more other people in the audience willing to speak? Okay, we're gonna close that portion. Uh, clerk of the court, Mr. Matt Reynolds.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. I have nothing this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. County attorney, Mr. Rich Commando.
I'm good. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner, county administrator, Mr. Terry Suggs.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have no further comments today.
Okay, Commissioner comments, Mr. Turner.
Yeah, I wanna just reiterate one more time, but, you know, some of the things that we do in sitting up here at this dais are very uncomfortable, and it's things that we don't want to do, like the case this afternoon in East Palaka. Um, I'll take this opportunity to say it one more time. In my opinion, it sucked. It really did. I wish that we had a better option, but we've got to listen to our legal counsel when he tells us that's our best option, and we've got, we gotta do it. If this was me personally, I don't know that I would've took the other option or not, but it's not me personally. I represent the citizens in the, in the best interest of the county, and I feel like that's what we did today, as much as distasteful as what it turned out being to me. So uh, I think that's all I have today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Pickens.
Yeah, Chairman Harvey, I, I agree, it's um, you know, each one of us up here, um, you know, want, just wanna make the best decision for the county as a whole and the citizens, and I think we did, and I think we did again today. And um, it it just, um, in my mind, it, after listening to Rich a couple of times, it just made no sense to move forward, other than the way we did. I'd like to just um, commend and compliment um, our board staff, Juliana, Administrator Suggs, everybody who's aboard in this audit, and also Matt on the clerk's side with your staff, another clean audit, even though we did switch auditing firms, um, they still found that we are in compliance and in good solid shape in this county. I just thank everybody for their efforts. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Pickens. Ms. Wilkinson.
I just wanna concur with my colleagues regarding today's um, decision that we had to make for the 55 and up community in East Palaka. That certainly was hard. Um, while I don't necessarily like the business model, and it's not a place that I would particularly live, um, at the end of the day, we have to do what's best and throw in good money after bad. It's not never what's good for our community, and I am not afraid of a lawsuit as well, but at the same time, I was, had some concerns of what we would lose in the process, and so I think that uh, we had to make the decision with the best knowledge that we had, and I think it was the right decision. And then on regarding animal services, um, we do have some issues. She is correct, we do not have a Facebook presence. We do have some other things, like I know Kathy Tillman put some adoptable dogs out there. I share it all the time.